Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting on today, June 4th. It is 6:04, just coming on a closed session. Can we please have roll call?
Trustee Hodges.
Present.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young?
Present.
Trustee Amboy?
Present.
President Fox?
Present.
Trustee Morales?
Present.
Trustee Simmons?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Do the pledge of allegiance. A report of actions taken in closed session was just direction given. At this time, do I hear an adoption of our board agenda? Boy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve our agenda.
Dr. Young?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges?
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Agenda item six, board presentations.
So for agenda item 6A, it is my honor and privilege to present resolution number 5040, which recognizes our two student trustees. Trustee Alasia Simmons from Jesse Bethel High School and trustee Ricardo Morales, few days left, of Vallejo High School. I've thoroughly enjoyed seeing our two trustees grow and develop as civic-minded citizens. I expect to see and hear great things from them in the future. Trustees Morales will be attending Sac State this fall. And trustee Simmons will be entering her junior year at Jesse Bethel High School. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with trustee Simmons as an active member of the superintendent's advisory committee. Do I have a board member willing to read the resolution?
Trustee Hodges? Thank you, trustee Hodges.
Whereas, the Vallejo City Unified School District hasn't had student board members' representation since 1998. After 25 years, the opportunity was made available for students in 2023 with one student representative. In 2024, Superintendent Ruben Aurelio expanded the program to include a representative for Vallejo and Jesse Bethel High Schools. Whereas, on November 6, 2024, Vallejo City Unified School District Superintendent Ruben Aurelio administered the oath of office to Ricardo Morales, student trustee, representative of Vallejo High School, and Alasia Simmons, student trustee, representative of Jesse Bethel High School. Whereas, Ricardo and Alyssa immediately began representing Vallejo City Unified School District when they were given the opportunity to collaborate with the City of Vallejo Youth Coordinator, who awarded both trustees with opportunity travel to Washington DC and Tampa, Florida, and represent Vallejo at the National League of Cities Youth Delegation Conferences. And in December 2024, they traveled to Anaheim, California for the California School Boards Association Annual Education Conference and Trade Show. Whereas, Ricardo and Alyssa have made a tremendous impact at their school sites, Vallejo City Unified School District, and in the community by networking with other like-minded students in California and other states, spearheading the research of information for student trustees to receive the same monthly stipends as the elected trustees. Based on their successful research, on February 19, 2025, the governing board voted five to zero to update BP 9250 and approve the $260 per month stipend for student trustees at code 35120. Now, therefore, let it be resolved on this day, June 4, 2025. Student trustee Ricardo Morales, Vallejo High School, and student trustee Alyssa Simmons, Jesse Bethel High School, have served and made a tremendous impact on the Vallejo City Unified School District Governing Board of Education for the 2024-2025 school year.
Thank you. Would you like to make the motion? You'd like to make the motion to approve?
No, I can let somebody else do that.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Vice President Amboy?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges?
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Ah, yes, 6B. So Assistant Superintendent Dr. Patrick, you are up. We're going to be recognizing our employees that have hit milestones in their years of service. Tonight, we're going to be honoring employees that have hit their five-year mark and all the way up to, I believe, 35 years with our district. So Dr. Patrick and Director Kagami.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be... Okay.
Good evening, President Fox, Vice President Amboy, trustees Young and Hodges, Simmons and Morales, Superintendent Aurelio. Did...I wasn't sure if you wanted to read the proclamation or the recognition for retirees before?
Well, I know we are going to read, yes, we're going to read the resolution honoring our retirees. Right now, we're on the years of service item.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
I'm moving too fast.
That's okay.
Okay, so before we begin the recognition of years of service, I just want to say that I received quite a few emails today because everyone is following their years and they wanted to make sure that they were appropriately recognized. And so just briefly to explain to the board, we run a report typically for a specific timeline within the year. There's always going to be overlapping because it's based on your seniority start date. And so if your date was after June, then you're likely not to be included in this year's report. So I've explained that, so if anyone reaches out, they will be recognized the following year. Okay? And with that, we will start our recognition.
Okay, I'm going to start with our employees that have five years of service. Maria Del Carmen Barasas Ayon, Vincent Benag, Michael Carroll, Michelle Craig, Dennis Dilly Jr., May Dosina, Juanita Green, Malia Lesperance, Samad Mahan, Bradley McPherson, Laquila Nizelli, Lorena Ponce, Tiana Torado, Francine Thornton, Veronica Trahilio, Milan Willis, Jorge Yanez, Ava Aguilera, Noel Roy Augustin, Arlen Alumbah, Stacy Banks, Elizabeth Burgess, Courtney Blau, Kaylee Cameron, Anthony Chang, Eileen Chang, Karen Shen, Jeremy Cooper, Adele De La Peña, Suzanne Dubois, Anzia House, Laura Iriarte, Unice Jacoba, Mark Kleinman, Nazimar Lovelli, Michael Manor, exit McGriff, Divya Mixon, Vadim Nazarenko, Daniel Roach, Stephen Schelling, and Viet Tu Ta.
And I'll read those who have earned 10 years of service with the district. Jamal Andrews, Amika Barnes, Elizabeth Bruce, Jacqueline Calderon, Elizabeth Canaya, Michael Dakaris Jr., Emelda Inos, Mija Haname Gomez, Brandon Green Bennett, Tanya Hall, Tia Tanisha Lathern Turner, Yoshiko Hollands, Irlanda Ibasco, Diaz Dado Matulik Jr., Sandra McCormick, Francina Moore, Darrell Nervous, Arnica Nichols, Alan Prater, Monica Ramirez, Salvador Sanchez, Gina Santos, Ashley Stevens, Geneva Teet, Kevin Traveler, Rebecca Varela, Vaughn Watley, Michelle Wilding Oliver, Reginald Williams Jr., Ivan Zeniga Pell Castré, Juan Zeniga Pell Castré, Danisha Aron Macabe, Michael Baker, Jennifer Haves Willhouse, Jill Faison, Jessila Hernandez, Cynthia Horbert Holbert, excuse me, Maria Jacobo Martinez, Heather Jamison, Susanna Kumada, Christiane Leganden, Dante Lopez, May Lazada, Yvonne Martin, Laura Miller, Masami Marima, Kristen Newton, Sheila O'Shea, Catherine Palowski, Giles Porter, Stephen Quinlan, Jesa Rae Taylor, Renee Telling, Lawanda West Brown, Irene Western, David Zap, Janice Lubin, Danita Robbins, Jade Brandon, and Renee Collins.
Okay, for 15 years, Annabelle Bonnigan, Renee Burnett, Valerie Johnson, Amanda Millard, Sylvia Salazar, The Vet Beckford Nelson, Keandra Jefferson, Rhea King, Gregory Murray, Nora Rizwana, Linda Stabe, Marva Tademi, Lisa Silman, Sharita Dilly, Lakeisha Watson. For 20 years of service, Leo Barozo, Denise Benton, Evelyn Gulingan, Lita Ochoa, Christine Omori, Tamela Parrot Marcos, Rashida Samuels, Jennifer Aker, Dan Duville, Ansley Harris, David Henderson, Maria Lourdes Landevora, Sarah Petera Romero Romeo, Susanna Urias, Catherine Vavoda.
The list is getting a little shorter. We're at 25 years now. We're almost there, guys. Jesus Versanda, Tina Kerian Cesar, Amelia Castillo, Terry Cheeseman, Kenneth Cruz, Nancy Firestone, Cara Foley, Cynthia Kenyon, Cynthia Murray, Edward Rojas, Leanne Shurey, Jaswinder Singh, Annabella Tabique, Lamont Wright, Teresa Baxter, Catherine Katanzarit, Beth Gabler, Glorine Moncrief, Penny Osterhout, Crystal Points, Michael Soriano, Laura Sutton, Lori Tacmeyer, Donna Taveres, Elizabeth Thompson, Kimberly Mitchell Lewis, and Shelley Thompson.
The list is definitely getting a little shorter, Dr. Patrick. 30 years, we have Tina Corona, Rita Leroy, Stephen Bosch, Margaret Clark, Tamara Howard, Mark Risto.
And lastly, 35 years of service, Julie Hansel, Carrie Payenger, Regina Peumo, and Joseph Hatchett. And on behalf of the Human Resources Department in the Vallejo City Unified School District, we want to thank all of our employees for their excellent years of service. They will receive a pin with their years of service and a certificate. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pat. Thank you both.
The next item, we are going to be recognizing our retirees.
And before we start, did you want to go ahead and read?
Yeah, do we have a trustee who wishes to read the resolution? Or, I mean, I can as well, so. Trustee Amboy?
Recognizing VCUSD staff members on the occasion of their retirement. Resolution 5065. Whereas, the Vallejo City Unified School District has 1,302 staff members who provide valuable services to the students in the district from preschool through 12th grade. And whereas, there are 36 members of the district staff who have announced their retirement this year, which includes 15 classified staff members, 17 certificated staff members, and four administrators. And whereas, these staff members have contributed in many different ways to the district's goals by teaching and providing leadership in several of the district's support areas, helping students as accounting analysis, bus driver, canteen operator, counselor, secretary, custodian, dean's secretary, head custodian, para educator, SNS assistant one, senior general ledger accountant, TK assistant providing essential clerical and secretarial support. And whereas, individually, they have been a part of the district's family from five to 46 years with a combined total of 736 years of service to the district. And whereas, we are proud of the work they have done and appreciate their contributions to our students. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the superintendent for the Vallejo City Unified School District and endorsed by the governing board that the district and community congratulate them on the occasion of their retirement and wish them the best in their future endeavors.
And I'll read their names, but I also just want to say that...
Make the motion first.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution 5065.
And I'll make a second, second roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges?
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Oh, I'm not letting them retire. Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Sim...I'm sorry, trustee Morales?
Aye.
And trustee Simmons?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. I'm moving too fast. I just wanted to share with the board that the retirees will also receive a special gift. It's a really nice paperweight with a beautiful message and it basically reads, "Never underestimate the difference you've made in the lives you've touched. Enjoy the next chapter." So every retiree will receive that gift. And I'll quickly read the names so that I can take my seat. So for the first retiree is Stephen Bosch, Carol Cadeau, Fidelina Carter, Alvaro Garcia, Anthony Handy, Pamela Jacobs, Lori Morrison, Christina Naval, Landora Ramos, Laura Sutton, Rosemary Tarantino, George Wyman, Grace Anderson, Amelia Castillo, Graciela Del Toro, Norma Lavilla, Belinda Lawson, Manuel Macus, Lethe Martin, Kimberly Meredith, Maria Monterosa, Deborah Montgomery, David Rafanel, Francine Thornton, Deborah Watson, Jeffrey Wood, Melody Donahue, Christopher Waldron, Manuel Marin, Cynthia Serino, Lynn Baranco Bib, Annabelle Bonnigan, Marie...excuse me, Marla Jean Lambert, Kelly Toohill, Christine Heinrich, and Mitchell Romeo. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Superintendent Aurelio, I just also want to officially announce that the gifts and the pins and certificates can be picked up in the Human Resources Department starting Monday through Friday. And then after that time, anything not picked up will mail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item seven, do we have inter-agencies?
You have inter-agencies. I believe we have Louis Michaels from Vallejo Late Night Basketball. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. One second. So, good evening. I was told I have five minutes. Okay, cool. Good evening. Let me get my speech up. Okay. Good evening, board. Board president, trustees, superintendent, and community members. My name is Louis Michael. I'm a community organizer here in Vallejo, currently working within Toro's Public Health Program. I am currently working as the director for Vallejo Late Night Basketball as well. I'm also a longtime Vallejo resident and spent four years as a middle school teacher here in Vallejo. Tonight, I'm here to share about the late night basketball program and seek your support. Some of you know me from other work I've done in the community. If you do, then hopefully you know I don't take on something unless I truly believe in it. And this program is no different. I'm committed to seeing it through because our youth deserve it. Vallejo Late Night Basketball is a revival of a once-proven program that served over 400 youth each summer and was tied to noticeable drops in crime during operating hours. We're bringing it back, not just with basketball, but in the previous program, there was mentorship opportunities and opportunities for youth to really take advantage of the resources that were there for them. So this is going to be comprehensive, healing-centered approach, rooted in mentorship, community, and opportunity for our young folks. And Sergeant Hollis is here in support and was a part of the original program and can... Or, and he's been around and he knows that this is effective. And this is launching on June 20th and it'll run every Friday night through August 8th. It'll be at Elite Public Schools. We did try to get it hosted at Vallejo High School, but there were lots of issues around that. Then we went to GVRD and tried to get it hosted at their newly renovated Ben Franklin Gym that they now have. And there were lots of issues there as well. And Elite graciously offered for us to host this summer free of charge. So we're excited about that. And this is open to youth and young adults ages 12 to 25. And they'll have access to structured games with mentorship components, weekly breakout sessions on mental health, emotional intelligence, and college and career prep, and lots of other topics. There is going to be free meals, community resource tables, and intentional engagement with caring adults. And the gym will stay open until midnight, a time when frankly not enough safe and affirming spaces exist for our youth. This isn't just about sports. It's about prevention, connection, and transformation. I want to acknowledge the current reality many of you are navigating. I know firsthand how painful and challenging this season has been with budget cuts, school closures, and immense pressure on all of you to make important decisions. I understand how difficult it is to prioritize new investments and partnerships when so many core needs are under threat. But I also know that programs like this are not extras. They are essential. Vallejo needs more spaces where young people can show up as they are, be themselves, and have access to caring adults, mentors, and real resources. This program creates that space. And we're not doing it alone. Thanks to GVRD, we have secured a $25,000 grant. Elite Public Schools, like I said, is hosting us as a partner. And the Solano Community Foundation is our fiscal sponsor, helping us accept tax-deductible donations and steward funds with transparency. We've also received in-kind and financial support from numerous local individuals, organizations, and businesses. We've collected letters of support from VPD, Vallejo Fire, probation, sheriff, and many others voicing their support because this is bigger than just basketball. This is about community infrastructure that prioritizes youth and safety so that we don't have to rely on law enforcement after it's too late for intervention. We're not here to ask for money. We're here to extend an invitation for partnership and alignment. There are some ways that I'm thinking the district can support...
Wait and finish your...
Okay, thank you. I'm almost done. Promotion, helping us reach out to students and families by sharing flyers and registration info. You guys are the central hub for our Vallejo youth and have access to them, so that would be greatly appreciated. Participation, encourage staff and educators to volunteer, visit, or just witness what's happening. And then partnership, we'd love to explore... Um and then partnership, we'd love to explore how the district can align with this effort now or in the future um for future. Um opportunities when things might get a little bit better. Um I'll be emailing each of you a full program overview, including the budget, partner list, all the details. And then I've brought flyers to give to you um just to see uh what we're doing. Thank you for everything you do in serving our students. I'm super excited to see these student trustees here and I hope that you guys come out and get involved. Um and yeah, thank you for my for your time.
Thank you. Inter- do we have any more inter-agencies? Sergeant Hollis, would you like to say anything while you're here? Under inter-agencies? Put you on the spot? Maybe that reading we talked about for the um around the schools with the third gr- or anyway, anything.
Oh. Yeah, so um some of the collaborations that we've done with VCUSD and the Vallejo Police Department, and by the way, I'm Sergeant Hollis with the Vallejo Police Department. The PIO and the Community Engagement Sergeant. And one of the biggest initiatives that we just recently. Were able to complete was the third grade reading program where we went to every third grade course or class. In the VCUSD uh system and read to over eight hundred third graders, making it better in Vallejo, which.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And and this is just one of many um initiatives that we've started or. You know, been a part of, of course, the third grade uh dictionary pass out with the Rotary Club and. Uh what I'm very proud of is the safe passage, well, not safe passage, the safe start to school days that we've just recently done that we. Plan to put in rotation. Um we need to schedule it with the city. But I'm only here really to support. Uh Mister Lewis and late night basketball. Uh one thing that in my over a decade of being here in Vallejo. I have noticed um a few opportunities to communicate and reach out with the youth in our. Neighborhoods is late night basketball, which actually lowered the crime rate um with our youth. So. Anything to cause outreach with the youth is definitely something I'm definitely a part of. Uh one of the biggest uh objectives that we noticed was the animosity between the north and the south and east and the west and central Vallejo. And one thing where late night basketball was allowed us to do was kinda intertwine the kids. You know, we created the teams where um kids from the north had to play with kids from the south and kids from the east play with kids from the west. And together it created like a camaraderie where um it just it just built unity. And that's what we need in 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 our community is unity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Um Dr. Young.
Basketball, that's a that's a reinvention. That is so, I'mma date myself, okay? Uh so far back, um uh Officer Garrett.
Yes, ten years to be exact.
Yes, yeah, was part of that. An Officer Causey.
Yes, yes, yes.
You, all of them. They were right there and we held it right at the gym.
Yes.
Over there at Vallejo High School and didn't have any problems. I mean, it was just like, it was just like. It was somewhere for the youth to go.
Yes, we we never had a problem and it actually brought out a lot of recruits from um some of the local colleges, which was amazing. Uh unfortunately, COVID was the death of it. And we're just trying to revamp it and revitalize it.
I'm glad to see it come by.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm glad to see it come by.
Thank you, Dr. Young.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, President.
Have a good evening. Any other inter-agencies? Okay, uh B, oh.
This, are you're here for CSCA?
Yes.
Almost, almost. You didn't miss it. Don't worry, we'll call you.
EEA. Ever you like.
Either way, it's all the same agenda items, so however.
Sorry, can you jump the gun? Cause you know, I have two little ones that are anxious to get home. So um. I am Ashley Stephens. I am here again a part of uh CSCA, so good evening, Board. Um I am a Workers' Conversation Specialist. Um and then I actually was called as well for ten years. So, thank you, Dr. Patrick, uh for calling my name. My kids really like that. Um. Um we just want to say thank you for um, we just wanna say thank you for this year. We're looking forward to the conclusion of. This school year and the beginning of summer. Um we just wanna say also that CSCW Week was great. With the recognition of our classified staff. Thank you Superintendent Aurelio for sending our CSCA members um your video message. The members really appreciated it. We also celebrate or we're also excited to celebrate our retirees at the upcoming retirement party. Thank you Superintendent Aurelio, Assistant Superintendent. Assistant Superintendent Heather Tapasio, Assistant Superintendent Fernandez, um President Fox, Dr. Sonia Young. Um for supporting our retirees this Friday. Um it should be a relaxing evening and um. We have, you know, it should be relaxing evening to enjoy our retirees. Um and also our Sees Candy um. Fundraiser has been extended to July thirty-first if anybody would like to purchase that. So again, we just. Wanna say that we are grateful for the conclusion of the school year and we look forward to seeing. Anybody who was invited to our retirement party this Friday to recognize our retirees and.
Can you send the link for the Sees thing again?
Yes, we can have the link sent, yes. So yeah, it was um good to participate in the fundraiser and helps with um. Preparing money for our scholarship funds that we gave out um at our prior board meeting last, two weeks ago, last week.
Thank you so much for doing that.
Yes, so thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you for being here. EEA.
Good evening, Board, um Trustees, Superintendent. Um so I I wanna start off by thanking Sean Reed for giving giving the VEA address last um. At the last meeting. I was in Sacramento with two hundred other chapter presidents and pack chairs. Uh we were lobbying our legislature for alternate funding sources for our for our state budget. Um and we were also, there there was a lot of things that we were talking to our legislators about. Um paid pregnancy leave has been on, we we've been, we do this every single year. We spend a couple of days at the Capitol. Um some of some of the people up there, we know, they know us because we. We've helped, you know, help helped them. Um and and they and it's important for them to see us bringing things forward to them. Um. Since since the last um report, we've had our VEA officer elections. Every every year we do an election and every year it's we we elect half half of our officers and rotate. So this year, Marnay McKenzie was re-elected as as Vice President. Cassie Reed was re-elected as Secretary. Amy Herzog was relate was re-elected as High School Director. Lori Tackmeyer was re-elected as TK CDC Director. Paula Suarez Heavya Heavya was re-elected as K-eight Director. And Maria Jacoba Jacobo is is our new elementary director. Um and congratulations to all the teachers who who reached their uh who are celebrating their anniversary milestones. And um VE VEA, we we do a a dinner for our retirees every other year. So ne- next year we'll have, we'll we'll celebrate them at a nice dinner, so thank you.
Thank you for um for going to Sacramento and and trying to find those funds in a time that's so unknown. And getting more unknown. Um we really appreciate that and that just shows such solidarity and. Helping for the dedication to find whatever resources possible for our students. So thank you so much for doing that. Um we really appreciate it. Um and also thank you for the report. The end of the year, I'm sure everyone so glad testing's done. Open house is done, trying to pack up and finish a new a new ending to start an enjoyable summer. So uh anyways, thank you. V S M A. Not tonight? Okay, no report. Um reports of district advisory committees?
No reports this evening.
Community members?
Have not received any community member cards.
All right, student reports, we'll start with Elijah Simmons, please. Oh, wait, with Russell. John Finney, please. It's Russell, right? What's your name?
Josh.
Josh, sorry, okay.
Just a little bit off, but you're fine, you're fine. All right. All right. Good evening. My name is Joshua Cazares and this evening I would like to revisit the topic of our Boys and Girls Empowerment Group. And I will also share about the end of the year senior activities and share of our celebrations. The Boys and Girls Empowerment Groups were supported by our Positive Youth Justice Liaison and Solano County Office of Education along with our ASPs. And MHSP. Topics and discussions, we're setting goals and understanding that our plan is a vehicle to reach our goals. Resources and information on career exploration in higher education, mental health and physical health when one and one workshop. Um introduced us to yoga practices. Journaling where there was a weekly check-in. Um discussions also included the influence of social media and students were able to suggest topics for ideas of discussion or presentation. Now, the seniors did have a trip to um Great America and seniors spent the day in Santa Clara at Great America and had an opportunity to bond, get fresh air. And ride thrilling rides or ride thrilling rides. And everyone had a dining pass, so we were able to um, everyone was able to eat pretty much. Senior Sunset. Seniors and families were invited to participate in games, art activities, words of words of inspiration. Food, resources, take photos at our photo booth, and music. Staff joined staff joined in on the fun. And those who were able to attend seemed to have a great time. Celebrations. Regarding testing, the John Finney Complex has met our goal of ninety-five percent of student completion. I would like to acknowledge Ashley Malato, Reyna Segundo Velasquez, and Per- Perla Torres. Because they all completed the CMA program with eighty-one percent and higher. Lastly, Leadership Academy will have a stall ceremony this Friday to recognize the accomplishments of our graduating Eagles. The ceremony will begin at ten AM at the John Finney Complex located at thirteen forty-seven Amador Street in Vallejo. All board members are invited. Any questions?
What's going on next week?
Next week is graduation.
Why don't you remind everyone what you're doing after graduation?
All right, so after graduation, like what I plan to do?
Yes.
All right, so after graduation, what I plan to do is I'm already enrolled in um the automotive program at Solano Community College. So I'm gonna enroll in that. I'm gonna do um, I'm gonna try to get all my certs. And then after that, I'm gonna try to do an apprenticeship for five years. So that way, um you know, you start working.
You'll get it, you'll do it. So we're gonna see you next week with big smiles and caps and gowns.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Young.
Do we know who partnerships with um the Solano County Automotive? Partnerships as far as internships are concerned?
Community College, isn't it? Solano County Community College?
I would like to know because we have that facility right up there and right down below, we have auto roll.
Yeah, well, actually, um when I had attended their, um what's it called? When I had, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. I've been, yeah, when I attended their automotive day, um they had told us that. The dealerships right there off of Columbus Parkway actively seek out kids to um give an internship to.
Wonderful.
Well, they need some help. Some help, they need some help. They need to see, they need to hear from us, that our children need their support.
Right?
Thank you so much for your report, Josh, and we're excited to see you next week with your accomplishment.
All right, thank you. You guys have a good rest of your evening.
Now, Elijah Simmons, would you like to go next? All right.
Um good evening, everyone. As we approached the end of the school year, I wanted to share a few updates. Um lately, at Jesse Beto High School, we've had back-to-back spirit weeks. Um we've had around like three consecutive spirit weeks. Two weeks ago, I mentioned we had um um mental health awareness spirit week. Last week, we had a school-wide spirit week. And this week, since our seniors are um graduating, it's just a senior-only spirit week. Um the energy around campus has been great. Um it's been awesome seeing everyone doing their stuff like Twin Day, Anything But a Backpack Day. Toddler Day. I dressed up as a toddler last week, guys. It was really fun. On Monday, um me and Trustee Morales was able to have our last superintendent advisory meeting of the year. Um it was a great chance to reflect on everything we've been doing and hope to do next year, next school year. Um I'm looking forward to continuing to be on the Superintendent Advisory Committee. Um our seniors are getting ready to graduate and they will be doing their practice stage walk, I believe, this Friday. I saw something that said it was this Friday. Um it's exciting to s- it's exciting to see them, not necessarily leave, cause I have a lot of seniors that I really look up to. But it's happy, I'm happy to see all of their um like college announcements and knowing what they're gonna do in the future. This Saturday, I will also be attending um a future leadership Vallejo meeting where we'll be talking about public safety with the local police department on Amador Street. Um I'm looking forward to learning more about public safety from the police standpoint of it. Because at um Jesse Beto, we have a PHP program and we talk about public health and public safety, but from a medical perspective. So I think it'll be interesting to see what it's like from a police perspective. Um yeah. I also wanted to remind everyone about Saluna, a free mental health resource for people aged thirteen to twenty-five. I spoke about it. Um maybe a few weeks ago, but I wanted to bring it up again. Um it's a really helpful support system and something I really encourage everyone to. Check out or share with someone who might need it. And um next week, at least for Jesse Beto, it's finals week. And most high schools will be following a special finals block schedule. We'll be getting out early. Um so make sure to double-check with your schools what the schedule is ahead of time to prepare. And that is the end of my report. We only have a few days left of school, guys. I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Ricardo Morales.
Good evening, everyone. Um starting with my last student report of the year.
For Vallejo High School.
For Vallejo High School. This week, we have started the voting process for our leadership class officers. We have many participants who I know will do great in whichever position they win. Next, um this week, this is also the last week for all seniors in Vallejo High School, which means all seniors started their finals exams today through Friday. Um new new news to me, we still have school on Monday next week, but that day will be for senior send-off, which means. All teachers that seniors had will have to sign for them to graduate, from what I heard. And on June tenth, we will, we have two events for all seniors. Vallejo High School is having their graduation practice at nine AM at Vallejo High School in. The Corbus Field. And we are also having our senior sunset that same day at five PM. The location has still not been decided. And also on June twelfth, we will be having our graduation ceremony for the Vallejo High School class of twenty twenty-five. And this will be at one thirty PM at Corbus Field. On June twelfth, we had our last superintendent student advisory meeting, which I am glad to see the underclassmen grow and take a big step into their future. May twenty-ninth, seniors had their grad night where we all went to Universal Studios and it was an amazing time. We were there for about thirteen hours and we had many chances to go on rides over and over again. My favorite was um the Jurassic Park one. Where we were able to get wet. Senior war- senior awards will be happening for Vallejo High School on June eleventh, nine AM in the auditorium, where our families will be able to just see us. Get our awards for the school. And I believe two weeks ago or last week, the Filipino club had their award ceremony in the auditorium, which I believe they also did a dance to celebrate their heritage. And also African-American graduation will be on Sunday, June eighth at four PM. And the location will be at Union Baptist Church and the board is welcome to join. And on June, on June second, the Vi- Vallejo High School had a Pride Month celebration. And on June, on June second, the Vallejo High School had a Pride Month celebration and the quad during lunch, which I attended, it was great. And lower-class finals are happening next week, throughout Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I believe they're in block schedule, so they will be in a class for two hours. And lastly, two weeks ago, I was happy to hear back from El Reyes Scholarship, where I was one of the students who won the scholarship, and I was happy to meet the other students and I was happy to meet the other students and Jaime Reyes, who gave us this great opportunity. And on May twenty, oh, that was on May twentieth, and on June twenty-first, I'm going to the Fourth Annual Golf Tournament presented by R and M Reyes Family Foundation, where where I and the other students will be giving a speech on who we are. And that's my report. Actually, one more thing. I just wanna give my last thank you to everyone on the board for choosing me to be the student trustee and the Vallejo High School representative, and I'm going to miss all you guys. Thank you so much for this year.
Why don't you also let everyone know what you're going on to do?
So after the summer, I'm planning to go to Sacramento State. I'm majoring in cellular molecular biology, so science. After, after college, I'm planning to go to medical school for a few years to become a physician assistant. And from there on, I'm just hoping to provide for my family in any way I can, and yeah, that's my, that's my future. I need to do more stuff like this.
Thank you, and we're so proud of both of you, how much you've both grown. When they first come on, they were very nervous and make like, do we have to talk, and do I have to look, and now they're sitting tall and talking and giving lots of details. So you've grown so much as a leader and as an individual, and take this with you on your journey and continue, and then eventually get back to Vallejo with leadership. So again, we're so proud of you with your growth, we're gonna miss you, but we're excited to hear what happens on your journey. All right, Dr. Young.
Going both, to both of you guys. It's been a joy to watch you guys evolve. It's been a joy to listen to all of what you have to say, because you are the children of the future. And what you say makes a difference. What you do makes a difference. So you gotta keep on pushing. Perseverance is the key to your goal. You have to remember, when you feel like getting, not getting out the bed, you get out of the bed anyway. You gotta keep pushing. Keep your eyes on the prize. Because without you in the lane that you're supposed to be in, there will be no hope. I'm gonna be very realistic about that. I see hope in both of your eyes. I've seen it in your speech, I've seen it in your leadership qualities, and it makes me so proud. So proud. So keep on pushing, and I look for remarkable things. Because you are V C U S D. And without you, we don't have a future. So God bless.
Thank you. We are now down to consent item eight A through eight M. Do I hear a motion? Vice President Amboy.
I'd like to make motion to approve items eight A through eight M.
Dr. Young.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Vice President Amboy, I'm sorry. Trustee Young. Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Morales.
Aye.
Trustee Simmons.
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you. We are now down to agenda item nine, which is information nine A, V C U S D communications update.
Good evening, President Fox, Vice President Amboy, trustees and superintendent Aurelio. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Selena Baggyow, and I am the Director of Communications for the Vallejo City Unified School District. This evening, I'm proud to share a Snapchat of the, a snapshot of the work that is happening in the communications office. And for the first time, I have the pleasure of introducing you to the communications team. Tonight, I have with me Tori Suarez Hevia, our webmaster, and Maral Papakian, our new public relations manager, are with me tonight. This is the first time that our team is complete, and we're excited to give you a behind-the-scenes look at what we are doing. You may see us around on campuses with cameras and receive urgent messages via parent square from us, but while that is undoubtedly a part of our role, our goal goes beyond photography and crisis communications. At its core, the communications office builds trust, fosters engagement, and tells the story of V C U S D, amplify the voice of our students, staff, and families. We carry out this mission through a multi-pronged approach, including strategic storytelling, media relations, digital web communications, branding, community outreach, and timely internal and external messaging. Now, I'd like to pass it off to Tori and Maral, who will walk you through some of our key highlights of this school year, including comparisons to last year, to give you a clear picture of our progress and impact.
Good evening, trustees. First of all, thank you. It's a privilege to speak to you all, and I appreciate the opportunity. Let's see. So, our website is one of our farthest-reaching tools we have to communicate with our communities. The website is often an individual's first introduction to V C U S D, or their first go-to resource when in need of assistance. It serves our students and their families, employees, and other community partners. It is our responsibility that all three of these general audience groups have equitable access to information and resources they need. In addition to the website's organization and design, which are critical areas that impact a user's experience, we proudly have a ninety-eight percent accessibility rating. What does ninety-eight percent accessibility mean? Well, for a while now, our lives have relied heavily on digital tools. As a society, we've adapted our sidewalks, roads, and other public spaces to accommodate those with limitations and disabilities. However, many websites and digital platforms, regardless of organization or industry, have lagged far behind. By being ADA compliant in nearly every aspect of our website, we're ensuring that anybody with a disability or limitation, student, parent, staff member, or community member, has the same access to enroll their students, view employee contracts, and otherwise utilize our website to its full potential. This all contributes to fostering trust and transparency with our audience. Looking at performance, looking at the performance of our website over the last few years, the progress we've made is encouraging, to say the least. There are three areas I want to focus on. First, total page views. This is the number of pages that users have visited in total. Second is events, or clicks, downloads, searches, anything like that. And third is our user engagement or extended user sessions, anytime a user is on our website for longer than a minute or so. With the launch of our new website last July and continuous improvement since then, we have increased our page views from nearly nine hundred thousand in twenty, in, excuse me, two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three to two point two million in two hundred twenty-four and twenty-five. We've seen events, clicks, downloads, searches, that kind of thing, increase from two point one million to over five million. And the number of extended user sessions and user engagement has increased from about four hundred and twenty thousand to six, to over six hundred and sixty-five thousand. While I could share thirty minutes' worth of deep analytics, these numbers tell us that year over year, more of our audience members are finding the website to be an engaging and essential resource. Over the past year alone, we've added a plethora of new features to our website backed by user feedback. Last fall, we integrated A I. within our district and school websites. Based on daily metrics, this has proven to be a huge factor in improving users' experience and ability to quickly find information they need. We've also built our employee intranet, serving as a hub for staff-only resources inaccessible to the general public. Touching on trust and transparency, we've built a page, and now an entire section, foreclosure and commu- and, excuse me, foreclosure and consolidation information that features meeting agendas, event timelines, news, and questions from the community. Just a few other new features and improvements I'd like to mention are our new inter-district transfer page, our straight-from-the-ship question-and-answer feature, our community inclusion and support resources, our mental health support page, and our V C U S D brand guidelines resources. And with that, I'll pass it off to Maral.
Tori. Thank you all for having us. I'm so excited to be here and share with you a little bit about my position, since it's new within the district. A lot of you see me running around with my camera and taking film and video, and that's one thing that the P R manager role does. But largely, I've been tasked with creating positive stories and sharing those positive stories. We have so many positive stories to share. So Vallejo Unified School District, we are tasked with declining enrollment, so we need to figure out ways to get students engaged and want to be a part of our district. So that is a big part of our role here on the communications team. With that, some of our social and media, social media engagement, you can see here. The comparison was from July twenty-four to April twenty-five. We had engagement on Facebook and Instagram when I started, but it wasn't being posted every day. So now we have a continuous daily post on both Facebook and Instagram. Those platforms are generally used very similarly, but you'll see some differences in just how the platforms tools are used. So for example, Facebook allows you to create galleries of photos. So when we post something on Instagram, we may only be able to post ten pictures, and then we refer people over to our Facebook page where they can see full galleries from events. So we use those a little bit differently. But in addition to those two platforms, we've added Nextdoor, LinkedIn, Reddit, and we have had YouTube as well, where you see the board meetings and things like town halls. So not only are we doing daily engagement on our regular platforms, but we're adding platforms, and we're learning how those platforms are most engaged by users, and we're strategically tailoring our posts on those platforms based on how people are using them. Click ahead here. So this is an example of our Instagram from July to April twenty-five. You can see the increase in interactions, reach, and followers. So thank you, everyone, who is currently following us, and I encourage everyone to follow us on all of our platforms and share with your friends and family. This is an example of our LinkedIn and YouTube. So just one thing to note about LinkedIn, it was being used by V C U S D, but it was largely just job postings. So now we're really utilizing LinkedIn as a way to show off our achievements, our new staff leadership, changes in positions, and events, and awards, and things of that sort. So we're really trying to engage not just with the community, but the education community at large, and families and parents who are on that platform as well. In addition to social media, we have newsletters. So we have both an internal newsletter and an external newsletter. Our internal newsletter goes to staff, it's called Take Five, and then our external newsletter is called The Insider. I want to point out here the average open rate and the average read time of both, because if you look at the industry benchmarks, the average open rate is thirty-six percent, average read time is ten seconds. For our internal and external newsletters, we have an eight-minute and ten-minute read time, which is absolutely insane and exciting. In addition to our communications, we have what's called media relations. So this is an example of our media relations in terms of, basically, since I've been here a little bit before that as well. We have twenty-three different media outlets that typically publish our, our what's going on in V C U S D, most notably The Times Herald and The Vallejo Sun, which are local publications. But we've also gotten national media coverage, which is really exciting, the L A Times, A B C, C B S. Now, some of that has to do with closures and consolidations, but some of that has to do with some of the really amazing, great work that everyone is doing. And with that, I'll move it. Oh, I did wanna mention one more thing. With media relations and all of these stories that we've had, you'll see here it says positive, neutral, negative. So again, one of my major role functions here as the P R manager is churning up these positive stories. We have a lot of negative stories that are being told about our town and our district, and we're trying to change that narrative. Now we're at thirty-six positives, so we're getting up there, and we're gonna keep going. And with those publications, we've had an advertising equivalency of close to three million dollars, just in these one hundred and seven stories. So with V C U S D being out in the news, that's saving us from advertising. So we're gonna keep pumping out all of the positive stories, we're gonna keep building relationships with the media, and that's only gonna help further our cause.
So as you can see, our team intentionally improved our reach and responsiveness. While we have shared a snapshot of the, of what we do, we are involved in much more. This year alone, we have helped clean up the registration system, strengthened our relationships with the Vallejo Police Department, led the communication foreclosure and consolidation, and provided graphic, graphic design support. I'd also like to highlight some of our wins for this year. Tori was instrumental in creating the district's first-ever intranet. This is a website that is only for employees and allows us to use, allows us to use the information from our fo- move the, sorry, move the information from our forward-facing webpages and put them behind a pay, not a paywall, but a login, and make it more family-friendly, make our website more family-friendly. With Mud, sorry, her nickname is Mud, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. Model. With Model's expertise, we've brought consistency and branding to our social media efforts and expanded our presence to new platforms, helping us to reach more families where they already are. This summer, along with our Superintendent Aurelio, we'll present at the National School Public Relations Conference in Washington, D.C. We'll share our communication strategy behind our school closure and consolidation efforts and the critical lessons we've learned. Only forty percent of the presentations that were submitted were selected, and we were one of them. So we're really proud of that. We are really excited to showcase, thank you, we're really excited to showcase the work of V C U S D on a national level. This year, we also started this Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and with middle and high schoolers, and this group helped provide feedback on issues that impacted them, offering a voice in our, a student voice in our decision-making. And for the first time, I'm, I'm happy to share, that we will have Spanish-language commencement programs for the high schools instead of English only. Looking ahead into the summer and into the new school year, we are planning a complete refresh of the district website. Over the years, content has been moved and reshuffled between platforms. Now we'll take a strategic look, a strategic approach, cleaning out outdated pages and restructuring information to make this site easier to navigate and more accessible for families. We're also mindful of budget constraints, and we are proactively shifting previously outsourced work to be done in-house. One example of that, we are learning to use video equipment and editing software rather than hiring a contractor. Our first project, which I'm very excited to share with you, is an enrollment campaign. It's called Think V C U S D First. We know that families in Vallejo have many choices. I could tell you all the reasons why V C U S D is excellent, but we believe it's more powerful to hear directly from our students, staff, families, and teachers. This will be a fifteen-video campaign in English and Spanish showcasing the voice of our community as they share why they choose and stay with V C U S D. A dedicated website and social media push will also support the campaign. I'd like to share a short preview of the first video tonight, and we have not showed anybody, so you are first. It's there. I can share it with you if you'd like via email. Ricardo was one of the people that we interviewed. We interviewed him yesterday, so we're excited to use his video as well. Oh, there we go. It's muted.
My name is Sophia Moreno, and my position in the district is a teacher at Cave Language Academy, and I also teach adult school English for second language learners. I've had the pleasure of volunteering and being at other districts, but I think what makes VCUSD unique is the diversity. When I was a student, we didn't have a dual immersion program. That's one of the nice things that we now have, where we are cultivating bilingualism and multiculturalism within our students. I think that's very rare, and for me, that's why I stay, um, because I see many of my students in myself. We don't have to just think of education in terms of children. I had a student, her husband also was a student at the adult school. They both would come here twice a week, and she started doing English classes to then hearing about the high set, taking high set classes, and then moving on to citizenship. And they have recently become a citizen of the United States, so those are just things that kind of motivate you as a teacher. Sometimes when we think about teaching, we think about like academic growth, but this student in particular touched me by their social emotional growth. They had a really hard time regulating their emotions and just being able to cope with like small things that would trigger them throughout the day. And from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, I saw so much growth in them, just how they were able to use the resources provided, like the mental health support provider, our SSTs, to help kind of create a space where they felt safe and heard. So for me, that student is someone I will remember for all my years of teaching. Think VCUSD First.
Thank you again for your continued support of our team. We are honored to serve our community and tell the stories that make VCUSD shine. We're happy to answer any questions.
Where the video clip be shown?
So we're creating a dedicated website for it, so we'll have that, and then we're also gonna have them on social media, and then we'll also show them on YouTube, and then we're hoping that we can use them on some of our other platforms and meetings and all kinds. We wanna, we wanna blast it everywhere.
Vice President, why?
Thank you for your presentation. I've watched your, your department grow from a one-person team to, to the three of you, and I'm very proud of that you are a part of us. As far as, just looking at some of the, at the data, um, I know you, you mentioned about the total page views and, um, in terms of the clicks. How does our website compare to other, other districts, um, across the, across the county?
In terms of page views and, uh, user engagement, I can't tell you a specific answer because that's just Google analytic data that's allowed to just those administrators of those websites. In terms of ADA compliance, we rank at the top or close to the top. Um, not many websites are above seventy percent ADA compliant in general. Um, we are by far one of the leaders in the state and the country as far as our accessibility goes. Um, I can also tell you that in California, the majority of school districts have transferred over to Final Site, which has bought out School Board, Blackboard, or a few of the other previous hosting platforms we used. And wanna say it was last summer, I got to go to the Final Site Conference and see how other districts throughout the country are util- utilizing their platform. Um, and I was impressed at where we are with our websites. Um, a lot of districts still struggle with ADA compliance, page views, and organization. It's a unique type of website. A lot of other organizations and industry just need to focus on one, maybe two, general audiences. We have a lot more than that, right? We have resources for students, we have resources for parents, staff, legal obligations. All of that makes it a really difficult responsibility for a district. And so I really appreciate being part of this team and, and helping to put those together and, um, continuously making our website a little bit better, so, yeah.
Thank you. And also I have an, um, another, maybe, maybe a wish list, I guess. We've been, the strategic plan has been such a big, big focus for us for the last couple of years. And I, I would like to see possibly maybe a, a scorecard based on the strategic plan that we can actually have on our website. Um, that way, we can have the data and people can see what, how our plan is being, um, is effective and things like that.
I definitely, um, with Executive Cabinet, we're working on what we're gonna do for next year, and so we can get some of those goals, add them to the website, and show where we are in our progress towards those goals.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
If I can interrupt.
Yes, we, we skipped, we're gonna go back to something.
So I, we omitted a, a group of students who are in the room, and I wanna make sure they get some time. So, uh, Dr. Kelly, do you wanna do, do we have a, a quick introduction and support of our students who are here?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I have with me today, uh, a group called Willie B. Atkins Program. Students are Willie B. Atkins scholars. So they're here to make a presentation to you, just to kind of give you an idea of just how our year went.
And so they, they would have been part of the student reports, so we wanna make sure that we know where they're at on the agenda.
Good evening. My name is Masai Alensabi. I am a third-year Willie B. Atkins Scholar, and I am a junior attending Jesse Beto High School, and I'm the founder of Masai's Mary Toy Drive, and I'm the youth president of our NAACP Youth Branch. And I am also a two thousand Omega Gen. And for those who don't know what the Willie B. Atkins Scholar Program is, it is to increase the number of African-American students who will enroll into college or even a trade school after high school. We learn to be successful to our goals. Or we learn to be successful to have goals, establish superior worth ethics, expose students to success, uh, successful role models and college experiences, and to develop and understand racial pride, our culture, and the role we play in society. I've completed my third year with Willie B. Atkins and have been enjoying this journey with feeling a sense of pride. Doing this program along with my fellow peers has been amazing. Last year, we went to colleges in DMV area on the East Coast. I fell in love with Howard University, experiencing the sense of community and brotherhood and sisterhood. Or maybe it could have been familiar logos of Omega Sci-Fi on the fraternity building. Since I am currently an Omega Gen, I ended up coming home with a Howard University leatherman jacket. This past spring, we traveled to North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia area. I learned and experienced the formality of applying for colleges. And guess what? I was accepted on the spot from Benedict University. I live with ADHD, and I'm also deaf-heart of hearing. The emotion of feeling like a true scholar, that is what it's like, and that's what I felt. I felt like I was exposed to the next level of moving up. Looking forward to my senior year and our college tour for next year. I want to thank the school district and the Willie B. Atkins for giving me these amazing opportunities for my personal growth. Each year, I feel more confident, a special thanks to our Willie B. Atkins leaders, mentors, and staff who continue to work alongside me and lift me to become a better me, and upraise for my success. My village, I thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kai Nguyen. I am a seventh grader attending Vallejo Charter Middle School. I am a twenty-twenty Omega Gen Vallejo chapter, and I am a first-year Willie B. Atkins Scholar. Um, the things I could say about Willie B. Atkins would take me hours and hours of long, but I'm gonna cut it down short. The Willie B. Atkins is a great program. Uh, it has made me better in every way as the first seventh grader to grace the Willie B. Atkins program. I'm very proud of myself and my peers, for I was not alone during my trip at Willie B. Atkins, as I was with my sister Candace Toledo, who's right there. Um, she has been a great guide to me in my journey in the Willie B. Atkins program and throughout my life. She's wonderful and amazing. The Willie B. Atkins program has transformed me from a, I'll take this and I'll live with it kind of person, to now I am a person who, if I get a bad grade on something, or if I miss a point, I'll go back and I'll retry and retry and retry. That is also from my grandmother, Elizabeth Griffin, who is a very good part of my life. As a first-year Willie B. Atkins Scholar, I was not allowed to do most of the stuff I would like to do, but one thing I was very excited to do was the Black College Expo. Over there, I was able to see a lot of the colleges I would know, uh, the colleges I would see and probably go to one. The one I had sights on was Howard University because of, uh, like Masai said, of the Omega Sci-Fi fraternity. I hopefully will be able to visit the Howard University later in the future during, when I'm older. I love the mentorship from all the teachers that, and all the teachers and all the peers I had at the Willie B. Atkins program. Two of the most notable ones are, um, Dr. Kelly and my auntie, auntie. Ms. Dilly. I love how, when I was first starting out, I did not know anything, but over the time and course, I was able to build up my confidence. And I didn't haste to go complain to my grandmother about how, how hard this program was. Instead, I decided to persevere and try, and now I'm ready to go on to my second year of Willie B. Atkins as an eighth grader next year. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Kanaya Robinson. I'm a senior attending Jesse Beto High School, and I was a second-year Willie B. Atkins Scholar. The Willie B. Atkins program has truly been a life-changing experience for me. Our weekly Monday meetings taught me valuable skills that I now use every day, especially when it comes to building strong study habits, study habits, understanding how I learn best, and improving my communication skills. We didn't just focus on academics. We had real, meaningful conversations about self-care, mental health, and how to carry ourselves as young black leaders. At the beginning of the program, I struggled with anxiety around public speaking. Just the thought of talking in front of a group would make me nervous and self-conscious. But the Willie B. Atkins program helped me work through that fear by creating a supportive and encouraging environment. Over time, I began to feel more confident expressing myself, sharing my thoughts in group discussions, and even speaking during events. I've learned to believe in my voice, and that's something I'll carry with me forever. One of the most impactful moments of my journey was attending the Black College Expo. The experience really kickstarted my college search and introduced me to the world of HBCUs. Before attending, I wasn't exactly sure where I wanted to go. But the, through, but through the college tour that Willie B. Atkins provided, I discovered Morgan State University, and everything changed. As soon as I stepped onto the campus, it felt like home. The energy, the culture, and the community was everything I had been looking for. Without this program, I might have never found the school that feels like the perfect fit for me. Another huge part of my success came from the college portfolios we built. At first, I didn't realize how important they would be, but when it came time to apply to schools, having, having a complete and professional portfolio made a major difference. I truly believe it's one of the ma- main reasons I was accepted into over twenty HBCUs and, and, and awarded more than one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in scholarships. Thank you. Because of the support and preparation I received from the Willie B. Atkins program, I am proud to say that I will be attending THE Morgan State University this fall. Thank you. We also participated in something called the Rites of Passage, which was one of the most powerful and emotional parts of the program. We were split into girls and boys every morning, I mean, every Monday evening to talk about the challenges we face in today's world and how we really feel about them. For, for the girls, it felt like we were creating a safe space and a sisterhood. I appreciated being able to connect with the other girls on a deeper level. My favorite part was the Battle of the Sexes when we got to ask each other questions. It gave me insight into how the boys think and helped me better understand my fellow Atkins brothers. Overall, I'm incredibly grateful for my time in the Willie B. Atkins program. It helped me grow, not just as a student, but as a person. It pushed me out of my comfort zone, helped me find my voice, and taught me the importance of being proud of who I am. I will forever be grateful. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Shahim Omari Kali Pope, and I'm honored, and I'm honored to stand before you as a first-year Willie B. Atkins Scholar and a senior attending Vallejo High School. I'm also proud to be a first-team all-league athlete specializing in the three-hundred-meter hurdles and currently ranked seven in the Bay Shore area. Thank you. I'm committed to Portland State University, where I'll be ma- where I'll be majoring in public health studies, working, working toward my bachelor's degree, sorry, everyone, working toward my bachelor's degree and ultimately a future in the medical field. Tonight, I'm here to share a little bit more of how the Willie B. Atkins program has shaped my journey and how it's helped me, and how it's helped me into the person I am today. Coming from a culturally divine background, both Cuban and Trinidadian, I was grown up to grow pride within my heritage. My family has deep roots in the culture and community. In fact, my grandmother was a Black Panther in, in New York, so, sorry, y'all. So needless to say, my culture runs strong through my veins. But despite the strong foundation at home, I hadn't always been, I, sorry. I hadn't always had the chance to stand around my people, to be surrounded by others who truly understood where I came from. Joining Willie B. Atkins program, that changed forever. This program surrounded me with like-minded people, like-minded students from all over areas, Vallejo, Benicia, and all driven, all passionate, and all rooted in their identity. Through Atkins, I built real lasting connections with scholars who felt more like family and classmates. Throughout the year, I had the opportunity to learn from alumni who came before me. They taught me, I'm sorry, and what they taught me has stuck with me with every step of the way, to keep going, to stay passionate, and to never let anyone talk me out of my purpose. One of the most powerful moments of the journey that I was attending was the Black College Expo. Now growing up in Vallejo, you get exposed to a mix of cultures everywhere you go. But being at the college fair, being surrounded by Black success, Black excellence, and Black professionals during incred- doing incredible things, that was a game changer. You don't always see that kind of representation on social media or even in day-to-day life. But at those fairs, I saw people who looked like me becoming doctors, CEOs, engineers, and mathematicians. And it reminded me that there's no limit to what we can do. I even had the opportunity to speak with Black doctors who offered me advice about my path, particularly in oncology. One doctor told me something that stuck with me. Stay focused no matter how challenging or discouraging it may seem. The outcomes will always be a golden opportunity. That quote right there, that's my fuel. That's why I contribute to push forward. That's why I say motivated, focused and driven. That's why I hold my head high as a proud Willie B Atkins scholar. This program didn't just prepare me for college, it reminded me of who I am. It connected me with the, sorry. It connected me with the community and it taught me that being proud, that being proud of who you are and where you come from is just as important as where you're going. So to everyone who's supported me along this journey, my mentors, my peers, my family, thank you. I'm grateful beyond words. And to my fellow scholars and alumni, let's continue to lead, to expire and to arise. Thank you. I'm sorry. And one more thing I'd like to say, um, this is gonna take a lot out of me, cause I've been holding this in, but. During this journey, I've experienced a lot of mental issues. Uh, some of my friends know, some of my friends don't know. But my mom has been battling cancer, so. Going to Portland State for my major in Public Health Studies, that's the reason why I wanna continue to do what I do. For my family, for my friends and for the scholars that look up to me and for my, for my younger teammates as well. So I'd like to thank everybody for this opportunity and, um, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
I know this wasn't a formal part of the program, but if there are any questions for our scholars, they'd be happy to answer any. And I think what you just saw is a testament of the family that the Willie B Atkins Scholars Program provides. Um, it's more than just a program. It's, it's a, it's a way for the students and the, the staff to really. To love each other and to support each other into greatness. So, thank you so much.
Trustee Morales.
Thank you, everyone, for your presentation, Willie B Atkins Scholars. I just had a few, I just had a quick question. How did you guys hear, um, about this program and how do you think we can let other students know about it?
My experience, um, I have a lot of people around this area in Vallejo City Unified. And I'm so thankful for the people that helped me through my life as well. Um, there's actually someone in me in this room right now, Dr. Kelly. I would like to say thank you, especially to you. You put me in a lot of programs, man, and I really appreciate you because without you, I really wouldn't be like. You know, active in this community. Well, in which he was the one who informed me of the Willie B Atkins program. As well as the Omega Gents program. So I would like to say thank you to him.
I heard about the Willie B Atkins program through a friend of mine who was, has actually been in it since her eighth grade? Yes, her eighth grade year. So she told me about it and I wanted to join earlier than I did, but. I had personal issues going on, so I was really, um, excited when I was able to join, so.
I have a lot of people in my community who have told me about this program. Uh, most notably are Dr. Kelly, Ms. Dilly and my grandma. And my sister was, uh, who had came into her eighth grade year as a Willie B Atkins scholar in her first year. And as a kid, I would always like, I would always see her and I was, oh, I would always want to be in the class. And if it answers your question, um, just people and the way we could like get people to like come to our program is. We could start off with flyers and then maybe go on to have scholars come into the classroom and talk about their experience. I have had, um, one time, Dr. Kelly come into my classroom and talk about what it's like to be a Willie B Atkins scholar. And that has inspired for one of my friends to come in the eighth grade year next year as a Willie B Atkins scholar.
I heard about this program was from a friend of mine, a very close friend of mine, which was Jeremiah Williams. He is, um, a fourth year Willie B Atkins scholar. And so, um, ever since, like I said, okay. I'm gonna join it, you know, join it, join it, join it. Um, I seen Ms. Dilly and she asked me if I was, um, if I was interested and I said, yeah. And I seen Dr. Kelly. And ever since then, they've just been on me ever since. And then once I finally joined, um, greatest experience. I would definitely say, um. Yeah, it's a great experience, especially for youngerclassmen and me being a senior, it was a great experience as well. It got me, um, accepted in Portland State, actually. And, um, it, it was, it's a lot of information to take in. Um, I can just go on and on about it, but just to shorten it up, yeah, it's, it's definitely a great experience.
And so to conclude your question, I would like to say this, that building your village is very important. This Vallejo City Unified District, it has opportunities around here. You just have to build it yourself. That foundation is what can make you stronger. That's what I'm gonna say.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for sharing your story. I want to encourage you to be brave. Embrace your potential for greatness. And once you've reached some of your goals, consider coming back home. Helping bring up the ones behind you. Dr. Young.
I'm so proud of all of you guys. I, 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 I'm just speechless. First of all, because of the fact that I'm still here and I saw it when it got started. I saw the very beginning of the Willie B Atkins Project. And to see the products that they have produced over the years. To these historically black colleges and the universities in California is just to be. Embraced. Because the, the village that Willie B Atkins creates is typical of the Southern. Culture that we all come from. The Southern culture that, um. Keeps us eyes on the prize. That preaches us that we gotta get it, because if we don't get it, we're not gonna get where we wanna go. So you guys are to be. Um, applauded. Especially my girl there, ooh, girl. Girl, 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 girl. What can I say? Except you persevered. Welcome. You earned it. Earned it. Each and every one that comes through that Atkins Project comes back with a self-fulfillment of self. Who am I? I am somebody. And that's what you come out with. I know that to be a fact. I know that to be a fact. So whichever route, whichever way you decide, a historical black college or here in, on the West Coast. Uh, please, keep your eyes on that prize, because there's gonna be some adversity out, adversity out there. Um, even more so now, but you can't let nobody tell you that you are not somebody. And that they're not gonna step on your line and in your lane to steal your joy. So you keep on pushing. Okay?
Thank you, everyone, for being here and sharing your stories and we can't wait for you to come back to Vallejo and what great things you're gonna do here. Have a good evening.
We're gonna move to.
Congratulations on ten.
We're gonna move to item nine B, Assistant Superintendent Topasio, you presenting.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, a few weeks ago, Trustee Flores requested a, uh, presentation. On how we support LGBTQIA+ students in VCUSD. I'm sorry, he's not here to hear their report. Um, but, um, I wanted to provide some updates on those opportunities. So, good evening Superintendent, President Fox, Vice President Amboy, Trustee Doctor Tlatania Young. And, and Trustee Hodges. Um, today I'll just be over, giving an overview. Of some of the ways that we are fostering safe supportive environments for our LGBTQIA+ youth. Um, I'll start with just a general policy note. Uh, we do follow a, a strict non-discrimination policy. Um, that outlines our measures to prevent discrimination and harassment of staff or students. Based upon their identification of gender, gender identity, gender expression and, and, uh, any other protected status. In addition to that non-discrimination policy, um, I would like to note that, um. The School Success and Opportunity Act AB twelve sixty-six also protects students' rights regardless of sex. Sexual orientation, gender identity or gender expression. Uh, and this act ensures that students have access to resources and programs that correspond to their gender identity. Um, whichever, whichever they assert at school, um, student access shall be based upon their choice. Okay? Uh, I wanted to also make sure to share with the governing board and the community. That we have a focus on working to foster high-quality social, emotional learning opportunities and wellness on our campuses. Uh, school leaders, teachers and staff work to provide environments and cultures that foster caring relationships, inclusion, empathy and equity. Um, and just as a note, uh, this references the CASLs and CASL stands for the Collaborative. For Academic, Social and Emotional Learning and is a leading resource for social, emotional learning instruction for schools. So that is a tool, just like we have instructional priorities, we have social, emotional learning priorities where equity and empathy are centered. Uh, our mental health support and wellness spaces are a key resource for all students. But for, particularly for our LGBTQ plus students. So over the past two years. Mental health support providers have engaged in comprehensive training to focus on, um, inclusivity. Allyship and addressing implicit bias. Uh, these sessions have equipped mental health support providers with the knowledge they need to support. Um, our youth effectively. Wellness centers on each campus, um, are intentionally designed to be inclusive spaces. Um, including providing for needs for LGBTQ plus students and celebrating diverse identities. These, there are posters, resources, tools and, and access to mental health support providers to have a. Caring ally to talk to if that need should arise. And additionally, for our youngest learners, um, there's a program called Kimochis. Which is a social, emotional learning curriculum that mental health support providers use to introduce younger students to concepts. Of diversity, acceptance, empathy and these lessons focus on understanding and respecting differences. And fostering an environment where all students feel safe and included. Uh, related, just a little bit of data for the wellness spaces. Um. We do take data on students who use the wellness spaces and seventy students, um, chose not to disclose their, their gender identity. Fifty students did identify as LGBTQ plus, um, who utilized the wellness spaces this year. In terms of additional instructional opportunities, um, student health lessons, um, in the fifth grade. In, in puberty education include, uh, lessons on respect for differences, gender equity and human rights. Gender and sexual orientation, understanding those and gender-related definitions. Nothing, um, nothing of a sexual nature, but only defining gender and gender identity. In the upper grades, seventh grade and high school, um, where we do have lessons on sexual health. Um, we still emphasize respect for differences, gender equity and human rights, gender and sexual orientation. And more detailed lessons on gender-related definitions and terms, um, definitions related to human sexuality and, and personal identity. And, um, and a more in-depth discussion of LGBTQ plus bias and its effects. A few of our campuses, um, are, have some highlighted, um, activities that they're doing on campus to support students. So for instance, at Mare Island, um, we have a counselor from SCO, an intern. That is promoting student wellness and resources and has brought to the campus the Trevor Project, Slano Pride Center. And the seven oh seven LGBT Collective. Um, in addition, they, um. Provide SEL groups for students, uh, with the students participating. Fifty percent of the students participating identify with the LGBTQ community. So there is an opportunity above and beyond for those students. At John Finney, uh, they have a, um, program in, in collaboration with the Slano County. Library, um, a Gay Straight Alliance Book Club. And, um, they read The Dread Knot. By April Daniels, a novel about a trans superhero. Uh, the club was featured, uh, a couple of years ago. In the CTA Educator Magazine and continues to meet each year. So. We really want to do a little more. I want to acknowledge and I appreciate, um. Trustee Flores having brought this topic, requested this topic, cause it made me do a deeper dive into what's happening in our district. Um, there's a need to expand some of the current best practices. Um, to ensure that elementary, middle and high school students have access to more resources aside from classroom instruction. Um, and staff who can provide guidance and support in a developmentally appropriate way. Um, I want to spend some time reviewing the data in the California Healthy Kids Survey for students who identify. Um, as LGBTQIA+ on that survey. And do some work to identify, um, students, uh, staff on campus that would be willing to serve in mentorship or lead roles. Uh, to support students. There is some need to, for some ongoing training. We did do some, um, training a couple of years ago with the county office, uh, where they came and provided. Site administrators and district administrators with a, a much deeper look at, um. The needs of LGBTQ plus I's students, um, as well as making sure we have the right language and terminology. To use so that we're not using outdated language ourselves. And that's a really important thing for us going forward. But there is a significant room for growth and improvement in this area across the board. And, um, I was particularly struck by the words of our student last meeting. Um, and she spoke about the ongoing need for supporting students, um. Who identifies transgender or transgender students and the need for continued education for the overall student body to reduce stigma. And incidents of bias or bullying against students based on their gender identity. And so although our wellness spaces provide a safe space for students, all spaces on our campus should feel safe. Um, so we have some work to do and, um, I see this as a next opportunity for us going forward to do more. Um, and to set a standard across the district of what kind of clubs, services, supports should be available to all students. On any campus. Um, and I, um, I look forward to bringing back to you some of that information. Um, in, in the coming year. So I'll just close with a quote from Harvey Milk, "Hope Will Never Be Silent." Um, and I think that applies across many, uh, many of our, um. Of, of our activities in the district and across our city and our country. Um, and even in light of the, the young people that spoke this evening. Um, they are the hope and our kids are our hope. And so, um, I will close with that and take any questions.
I have. I'll start. Um. As we know with anything, education is key and education is the earlier you can educate. Um, especially different cultures that aren't, that maybe certain things are taboo. Or that are just unaware, cause there's no one in the family, there's no role model, there's no one to identify as that person. So when we talked about, um, I know the state standards in social studies, even at our early grades. Their curriculum has, um. Either stories or information, but what saddens me is I know some places teachers are afraid or don't want to. Or they skip over that section because it's either uncomfortable for their own personal beliefs or they just don't want to deal with it. So, um, I would hope that here in Vallejo, one of the most diverse cities in the United States. That we are for sure in our social studies, especially early on, making sure those units are covered. So our students see different types of families, different type of structure of a family. Um, at our pride salute just a few weeks ago at our flag, um, raising, we had. Two dads with their daughters. We had, I mean, it was wonderful to see our own population there with their own children. But if children don't see that early on, they don't understand there could be other family dynamics. Not only in the state's adopted standards through our social studies, but also. Not only in the state's adopted standards through our social studies, but also there's state-approved books that could be displayed, now could, should be displayed in our libraries, and not just for the few days in June that we're in school. So again, catching students earlier on with a book through social studies or a book in the library are two ways, when you talked about resources, those can be resources to show early on, and maybe that book definitely gets read out loud instead of no one ever sees the book.
Oh, I was just going to note that you may recall, if you were on the board at the time, several years ago, we had a whole series of books that we read at the younger grades. That's a Family, there was a video we watched, there's the Book One, Chrysanthemum, all of these books that, and, oh, it's the one about the penguins, I can't remember. But anyway, all of these books that we would read at the primary grades, just as exposure to differences, but I do appreciate you bringing that back to the forefront.
Hopefully they're still doing it.
Yeah, and I don't know to what degree, I know the books still exist, but I don't know to what degree they're being accessed and utilized, because I think what you speak to about varying levels of discomfort for staff members not wanting to rock the boat, not wanting to say anything controversial or do anything controversial, I think we're going to have to kind of reassert our expectations in those areas around, these are our policies, this is how we approach these things. I do think that the Kimochee lessons go a long way with kind of bringing that to the earlier grades, the earliest grades, to build that understanding of difference, right? As early as possible, and that all families are valuable.
Another training that happened many years ago, as you attended our reading training with Slon County trustees, we put one on here in Vallejo, it was many years ago, and trustees and superintendents came all around, and that was the topic, LGBT students and how to support. I don't think anything, no one was on the board at the time other than myself, but it was one thing that helped with other trustees and superintendents. But these books you're talking about too, I'd like to hear more about that. And just bringing things back and making sure things are implemented and not just on a shelf getting dusty. The other thing that we used to do for visibility, unfortunately, years ago, there was a lawsuit about things that weren't being done properly or said properly. And I noticed around the district, I don't know who else remembers, on doors would be a sticker saying, there's a rainbow sticker that said, "You are all welcome here." I don't know if those stickers still exist, or if they're still there, or they, I'm seeing some nods, but that came out from what I remember, a lawsuit of, anyways. So those at least is the visibility, and if there's posters or stickers saying, "You are welcome no matter who you are," that is at least something from early on through students' education, it's something that we're saying, this is what we believe in.
And that does exist, those posters around campuses, in public spaces of all natures, but specifically for student gender differences or LGBTQ+IA, you know, identities.
Because the worst thing is for a child to feel fearful or ashamed or scared and don't come to school because they feel they're being bullied, or they feel they're so different that they can't access the environment. And that is so heart, sad, just so sad. So I'm glad that we'll find whatever opportunities that everyone feels inclusive and that everyone is welcome. Another thing you did bring up, unfortunately, the highest suicide rate of our teens is our LGBTQI teens. And having, that's another thing the county, that we helped put on the county board, is about suicide prevention and having access and how the county can help and what resources, and again, having posters about that around, that there are ways to find help if a student is struggling. I think that's everything, and I'm really thankful for your presentation. Too bad trustee Flores wasn't here to hear his request, but he can watch it online. Thank you. Superintendent Relyea, do you want to say something on this too?
Well, I just really appreciate, you know, the deep dive and looking at where we're at as a district, and we do have a ways to go, and it's something we will move forward and do better as we move along, but thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now on nine C, public hearing. Vallejo City Unified School District proposed budget and statement of reasons for. So we are opening our public hearing, presentation by Ruben Fernandez, our closed hearing.
Great, could you expand it to, thank you.
We are now opening the hearing, the presentation.
Good evening, trustees, President Fox, Vice President Mboy, Dr. Young, trustee Dean Hodges. Good evening. Tonight I will present the 2526 proposed budget for Vallejo City School District. This budget reflects months of financial planning, projections, and analysis during a time of continued fiscal stress for California schools. This year's proposal is shaped by key trends, ongoing enrollment decreases, inflationary cost increases, and state funding constraints. Our goal tonight is to share with you not only the budget numbers, but the strategic framework guiding our decisions going forward, especially as we build towards fiscal sustainability. Tonight's presentation will begin with the budget development timeline and major assumptions. From there, we will review enrollment trends and ADA projections that drive our funding, followed by summaries of revenues and expenditures. We'll examine our general fund, both unrestricted and combined, alongside contributions to restricted programs. I'll also briefly review the education protection account. Lastly, we'll review the components of the ending fund balance and take a forward-looking view through our multi-year projections. This slide shows the milestones that really frame our fiscal year and our roadmap for where we're going. From the governor's initial proposal in January through the final state adoption in June, we've been aligning our planning and evolving state revenue conditions involving two, state revenue conditions and policy guidance. As we look ahead, we have an additional check-in coming up at the 45-day budget revise in August. Coming up next will be first interim in December and the second interim in March. Each report will include an update to revenue, expenditure, and enrollment data. The next slide really talks about revenue assumptions, that the foundation of our budget rests on assumptions. We're projecting a 2.3% COLA, cost of living adjustment for the upcoming year, which increases to 3.02 and 3.42 in the following years. These years' COLAs are estimates at this time, however, I must stress that these COLAs are insufficient to offset the inflation and the decreased enrollment that we're seeing. State revenues are anticipated to drop largely because of one-time funds have been exhausted, and future funding remains constrained. While mandated block grants and lottery allocations can remain steady, they represent only a small portion of our operating revenues. Importantly, we continue to monitor average daily attendance, or ADA, trends and the continuity of federal funding. With LCFF, our Local Control Funding Formula, driving the majority of our revenue, even modest ADA compliance declines translate to significant revenue losses for us, requiring ongoing fiscal restraint and careful planning. General fund revenue, our total general fund revenue for 2526 is projected to be approximately 200 million. The largest share, 132 million, comes from the LCFF. Other state revenues make up about 53 million, while federal and local sources contribute 9.9 million and 6.4 million respectively. The unrestricted portion of our general fund is about 142 million, and this is the bucket that directly funds salaries, utilities, operations, and site-based supports. With revenue growth limited in these areas, we must continue to prioritize our core services and evaluate all of our discretionary expenses. It's worth noting that one-time sources, including a land sale and reserve transfers, are propping up this year's coming budget. These cannot be relied on in the future, underscoring the urgency of closing our structural deficit and restoring balance to our ongoing revenue and expenditures. The relationship between enrollment and ADA is a key factor. Now, to frame this conversation, I'd like to remind folks that revenue is based on attendance and expenditures are based on enrollment. So our money comes from our attendance, but our expenditures are based on the students that are enrolled in our schools. Our enrollment continues to decline with ADA trends following closely. This is a slide from, similar, came from second interim, but it shows that gap between what we're receiving in ADA versus our enrollment. We're projecting further decline for 2526, consistent with demographic reports. The district is actively working to retain students and reduce outflows, including reevaluating our inter-district transfers and increasing local outreach. Our stabilization plans are closely linked to these enrollment trends, as ADA is the most critical funding driver. The next chart showing funded ADA and how we're being protected by the rolling three-year average of the state of California, as it supports districts across the state in declining enrollment. Looking ahead, we must incorporate accurate enrollment projections into every financial decision. The number of students in seats each day determines how much we can invest in program staffing and student supports. Other major assumptions, this year's budget includes one-time resources that temporarily stabilize our fiscal position. These include an $8.5 million transfer from the Special Reserve Fund and 6 million in proceeds from a land sale. These one-time solutions help mitigate the extent of the deficit spending, but they are not sustainable long-term. Our multi-year projections continue to show deficits. The administration is developing a stabilization plan and phased reductions and revenue strategies. Our goal is to include a detailed action plan in the first interim report this December well ahead of the March statutory deadline. This will give the board and administration ample time to evaluate our options and provide input on critical decisions affecting our students and staff. The district faces a cumulative deficit, structural deficit of $37 million by the 2829 school year. To address this, the administration is, again, is developing a phased stabilization plan that breaks this amount into manageable year-by-year targets. Plan begins with 15.5 million in reductions and/or revenue enhancements required in 2627, the following budget year, followed by an initial 16.5 million in 2728, and a final 5 million in 2829 to reach full structural balance. These phased adjustments allow the district to take proactive steps rather than reactive cuts, providing time for thoughtful implementation. By chunking the total deficit, the district can align fiscal recovery efforts with enrollment trends, program priorities, and the contractual obligations that we have. In addition to the structural gap, the budget does not yet account for future potential cost increases from bargaining or programmatic changes or shifts in supplemental and concentration spending. These variables will be incorporated as negotiations and program evaluations continue. Looking forward, rising CalPERS rates, inflation on utilities and insurance and special education costs increase are placing an upward pressure on expenditures. These cost drivers must be offset through efficiencies, reductions, and revenues if we're to maintain fiscal solvency. On the expenditure side, our 2526 budget reflects both the ongoing costs of operations and strategic reductions aligned with the enrollment decline that we're experiencing. Staffing accounts for approximately 80% of our unrestricted general fund spending, highlighting how sensitive our budget is to labor costs and enrollment levels. We are also addressing, facing increase in fixed costs, including employee health insurance, special ed mandates, utilities, insurance, and supplies. These inflationary pressures reduce the flexibility of our budget. Our unrestricted general fund expenditures for 2526 are projected at approximately 125 million, representing the operational costs tied to the core educational program, site-level supports, facilities, and district-wide services. These are the most flexible funds, but they are also the most sensitive to changes, as I mentioned, to revenue and enrollment. When looking at the combined general fund, including both restricted and unrestricted, we're seeing a total expenditures budgeted at 212 million. Within this amount, salaries and benefits account for roughly 67% or a proportion of the school districts, spending that limits our ability to absorb some of the revenue declines. And moving on to the contributions to our restricted programs, our unrestricted general fund makes significant contributions to restricted programs, particularly within special education, which continues to be underfunded by state and federal sources, you know, relative to the services that our students really need and our most vulnerable population. For 2526, when combined with required investments in our facilities and maintenance, these contributions nearly total 45 million. These contributions are not optional, without them, we would not meet our legal requirements for serving these students and maintaining the essential programs that we have in place. As these costs grow faster than revenues, the pressure on our unrestricted budget intensifies. We continue to explore ways to deliver these services more efficiently. The education protection account, which is something that we need to publicly disclose, is what's established under Proposition 30 and extended by Proposition 55, is a vital component of our LCFF revenue, and for 2526, we anticipate receiving 19.3 in EPA funds. These funds are restricted to classroom-based expenses, particularly the salaries of classroom teachers. The district is required to report, as I said, what we're spending publicly each year, and our budget complies with that requirement. When combining all sources and uses, including one-time supports, I mentioned earlier, the general fund remains structurally imbalanced with expenditures exceeding ongoing revenues. While we remain solvent for the current year, this imbalance is unsustainable. By 2627, without corrective action, the district will face a shortfall of 15.5 million. The earlier we can act, the less disruptive these adjustments will be, and the more control we can have over how these reductions are prioritized. Our projected any fund balance includes money that we technically legally can't touch and reserves we must hold by law. About 36 million is restricted for specific programs that can't be used to cover our budget gaps. Another 6.3 is related to the state-required minimum reserve, and that means only a small portion of our fund balance is actually available, and it's not enough to solve our long-term budget challenges. The statement of excess reserve shows the difference between our actual reserve level and the statement minimum. For 2526, we project a minimal excess reserve of approximately 4.2 million above the 3.3% requirement. While this amount may seem large in absolute terms, it only represents a few days' worth of operating costs in a district of our size, and it's not sufficient to cover the structural deficits that are in place. And this figure is expected to decline in the future years as we draw down on our reserves to cover those gaps. Our multi-year projections show that we can meet our financial obligations in 2526, however, maintaining solvency beyond that requires the implementation of major structural changes beginning in 2627. Specifically, we must identify and implement 15.5 million in ongoing expenditure reductions or new revenues by 2627, with an additional, again, 16.5 in 2728, and additional 5 million in 2829. In conclusion, while the 2526 budget includes one-time revenues, it is still showing deficit spending with structural deficits in the foreseeable future. We continue to monitor legislative developments that may impact funding and plan accordingly. And our commitment to students and staff remains unwavering. We will continue to bring forward solutions that stabilize and prioritize equity, transparency, and the educational excellence that we are committed to. Coming back to our fiscal timeline, just kind of to give a little bit of a foreshadowing of what's coming next, the 45-day budget revision may include technical updates or legislative adjustments from the final state budget. Again, as I mentioned, later in the school year, our first and second interim report will provide opportunities to monitor and respond to the changes that we're seeing in real time. And again, of particular note, that March 26 deadline is very important. By that date, we're required to have a complete stabilization plan identifying those reductions to resolve our structural gap in 2627. Our team is targeting that first interim report for an initial plan adoption. We'll bring more back before that, but this timeline allows the board and community, you know, time know, time for discussion and input and clarity before the final decisions must be made. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Young?
Thank you for that report. It was very precise. Not exactly what I wanted to see, but anyway, we move on. My question is, where do you see that we keep falling behind? What area can we check to make sure that that doesn't? It's something like your mortgage. When the mortgage company sees that you're gonna have a negative cash flow in your escrow, they automatically take that money and up your, up your, um, note. So why don't we have that, that mindset?
Sure. I think, you know, the, the first place that you, you look is, is obviously eighty percent of our budget is, is, is people and the, the great staff that support our students and programs. And having an accurate control system, a position control system is a goal that we have and we're working with the county on to develop that. It's the, if you can identify that and be very accurate with your budgeting, you can be very successful in, in, in eighty percent there, right? The other part of it is contracted services and consulting services, you know, keeping an eye on those and the processes for how those are proved and, and monitored. And, and those are some of our, our major goals for this year. And, you know, the other thing is, as well as a program review of our, our programs and educational services and, and special ed and keep an eye on those, so.
So is there anywhere within the auditing process or within the process of the daily running of the business that we can automatically have a flag flown up?
Yeah.
Like, 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 like the mortgage companies do?
Absolutely. And, and those are the systems where, some of the systems we're putting in place, both in internal controls around purchasing, but the, the practice of budgeting, the, the culture, the, the science, the, the tradition of reconciliation amongst the program managers. And so we're building, along with Dr. Paul Manziger, our new executive director, that, that, it's his first week, but.
You won't be sitting down there all the time.
He's a, yeah. But I think it's a culture of, you know, of having regular meetings and having conversations with those program managers, whether it be on the, on the program side or on the facility side, but empowering people with the information about their budgets and then having meetings to discuss where we're at and where we're going. And, and that's something that I think we, the district is, is committed to prove upon.
Dr. Young, if I could, if I can add too, this budget deficit did not happen overnight. This is why we did first phase of school closures and we identified budget reductions going into next year. Clearly, we did not go far enough, and so that's what's phase two and, and so on and so forth. We, we have to examine further as we right-size this district for the students that we have. So we will continue to do that work.
Yeah, I understand the phases, and that's not a problem, but I, what I'm understanding is the checkpoints before the phase is in. That's, that was the flag that I was, I was talking about. I mean, you know, and I use the mortgage company because I just got tagged, okay?
Vice President Amboy?
This is the first time that I've been on this board where we finally have those checks and balances that we didn't have before. And although the, the, it, it does feel very grim in, in a lot of ways, but I'm hopeful now we're implementing, you know, systems in place, which we, which we never had before. And I, it's, I think it's, we're climbing that ladder to getting ourselves out of that hole and recognizing certain things that we'd never recognized before. So I think we're, we're at a great start. We have the right people in place, and I think we're, we're, we're ready.
This train is back on track.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think through just being still very diligent about attendance every day and not, hopefully, people won't have district transfers and that students know the why to stay enrolled here. So I think with those three things, we, that's what's gonna, that can help us greatly. And if all of us are working together on that, every member from wherever you are, if every member's working on that and know those three things, I think that will help save the best we can, having that mindset. For two things you said, so the federal government's about nine million contributing and then is, do we know what's gonna happen, if that's in flux or if that's, or we don't know?
I think it's certainly in flux, and we're evaluating that on a weekly basis and.
Could it be cut, it, it, could it be cut like immediately or partially, or we, we don't know, or it could be just, we don't know, one day it could be, just go and wake up and it's gone today?
Sure.
So we don't.
Yeah, I think, I think our efforts continue to, with, with our legislative advocacy and with our, our, our work with our state representatives, I think that it's something that we'll bring back at the forty-five-day revise, kind of an update on, on where the, where that lands. But right now, the funding that we're receiving, we feel mostly comfortable that it's gonna be.
The title funding?
Yeah.
The title funding?
Well, the latest, I, I mean, obviously, I feel like every day the news changes with our federal government, but the latest was that Title I and SPED was gonna continue to be funded at the same rates, but pretty much everything else, so your Title II, your Title III, or all these other funding sources are, looks to be reduced in the proposed budget from the federal government. We just don't know at what rate at this point.
Or for the following year?
Correct.
Oh, the unknowns. Then special education, it's never been funded properly. We've never been given the percent we're supposed to be given, so that thirty-eight-and-a-half million, so the unknown with that as well.
Yeah. And I think that's, you know, if you, if I were to identify our areas of focus is special education is, is really at, probably at the top of our list. Our commitments year by year have increased significantly, as I have studied the data and Chris and I have studied the data, and we're looking at various efficiency tools and budgeting strategies to continue to work together. I think aligning some of the budgetary analytic, analytic resources from my department and begun to partner in, in having those regular meetings to, to strategize, you know, at this point, every other week, to, to make sure that we're moving forward, so.
So as the money may disappear, I wonder if the regulations or the mandates to implement idea and all the, would those also, I mean, if you don't get, but I mean, if you don't have the money, how are you supposed to implement it?
Right. And, and again.
Anyways, I'm just, I'm just.
My favorite word, unfunded mandates.
I'm just asking the question because, I mean, I want, I want, of course, I want things, services given, but if you don't have the money, how are you supposed to give the services?
Right.
Catch situation. But it's been a catch situation for years because it hasn't been funded properly ever since I've been here, so it's very frustrating. So those are just my two comments. Anything else from the board?
So just a reminder, you have to close the hearing.
Let's close this hearing and move on. Hearing closed.
You're gonna reopen the hearing for the next item?
And now we're gonna reopen another hearing.
I'm gonna do that four times.
Fun, fun. Here we go. So now we're on D, correct? Yes, Public Hearing, Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP.
Let's operate a brief review of the Valeo Charter School proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Ready. Our, this budget presents a fiscally conservative plan that prioritizes, prioritizes core educational services while maintaining compliance with our state requirements. The total general fund budget for this, let's go with this, for this budget is balanced with estimated revenues of five-point-four million and expenditures are closely aligned to avoid deficit spending, so we're not deficit spending in this fund. The budget reflects, reflects ongoing enrollment challenges as well, projecting ADA attendance of about four-hundred-and-thirty-two students. Despite the flat or modest revenue growth, the charter school has allocated funds strategically to maintain staffing programs and meet the three percent minimum reserve requirement. Key cost drivers include our, obviously, our salaries and benefits, which represent the largest portion of expenditures, and our multi-year projections anticipate financial pressures beginning in twenty-six to twenty-seven due to rising costs and limited growth, so we're gonna keep an eye on this fund. But it's currently on track to read its, reach its obligations through the twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year. This budget assumes no one-time, new one-time funding and includes continuing investments in our academic supports, student services, and technology. School leadership will continue to monitor these enrollment trends and policy changes and make any necessary adjustments to future revisions. Overall, the budget reflects a proactive and measured approach to financial management, positioning Valeo Charter School to navigate the near-term challenges while preserving the quality of its academic programs. Any questions?
Are there any comments from the public or from the board?
Right, I'd like to just ask, with our, our move from Valeo Charter coming to the Mary Island and potentially absorbing a significant number of the Mary Island students, do we, are we projecting a higher attendance rate for, for the school? Is that calculated into the budget or is it get delayed a year? I always forget how that's worked into.
Right, right now, it's, it's delayed a year, so we're, yeah.
Okay, with that, this public hearing is closed. And now we are on to our next public hearing, Information F. E, sorry, E, Local Control, LCAP. We're up again. Open a public hearing.
Good evening, President Fox, Vice President Amboy, Trustee Dr. Young, Trustee Hodges, Superintendent, VCU SD Community. My name is Cassie Gossett, and I am Director of Categorical Grants, and I'm here with Director Lourdes Miller to provide you all information on the Valeo City Unified School District Local Control and Accountability Plan for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Just a little background, in January of twenty-twelve, Governor Brown's budget proposed replacing California's complex funding formulas. This concept is manifested as the Local Control Funding Formula, otherwise known as LCFF, which allocates educational funds based on student needs and allows for flexibility and fund allocation at the local level. It was first introduced in the twenty-thirteen budget. The legislation requires the development of a three-year LCAP describing how supplemental and concentration grant funds are to be utilized to meet student needs with a focus on low-income English learners and foster youth student groups. Each local education agency or LEA and charter school must annually review and revise the LCAP in consultation with educational partners. The LCAP is a three-year plan that describes the goals, actions, services, and expenditures to support positive student outcomes that address state and local priorities. The current LCAP cycle encompasses twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-seven. The twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six LCAP is year two in a three-year cycle. The twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six plan contains the LCFF budget overview for parents and the Local Control Accountability Plan. So when we look at the LCAP, the Local Control and Accountability Plan has three defined roles that work together to build a comprehensive plan that supports our unduplicated students or students who are low-income English learners and/or foster youth. For twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, the percentage of unduplicated for VCU SD is eighty-five-point-five-four percent. While Director Miller and I are presenting this plan tonight, the LCAP is a compilation of efforts and input collected from a variety of educational partners. The plan encompasses actions that involve all aspects of the VCU SD organization. Furthermore, each action has multiple measures of accountability to determine the degree of success in implementation as well as effectiveness. Ultimately, the LCAP is intended to provide readers with an extensive picture of what Valeo City Unified is doing to address the needs of the district's unduplicated students. The plan is compromise, or comprised of sections or components listed on the screen that demonstrate how funding and actions are working together to address the needs student data as well as educational partner input has expressed. When it comes to educational partner engagement, opportunities to learn from our educational partners have taken place in a variety of formats over the course of the school year. Through meetings, focus groups, surveys, phone calls, conversations, and empathy interviews, input has been collected to determine trends that inform this plan. This year, we added the Superintendent Student Advisory Council as ongoing advisors in addition to the District English Learners Advisory Committee. When it comes to trends, the following trends emerged, and educational partners across all of the different groups, be it staff, students, parents, community, all informed the plan and asked that we prioritize well-trained, effective staff, that we continue and enhance academic student support, that we make sure we're providing safe environments that include mental health and wellness supports. Educational partners ask that we continue to focus on equity, inclusion, and resources for students to expand their learning, as well as increase family and community engagement, expand programs that connect students to school as well as post-secondary, provide enrichment curriculum and extracurricular activities, and continue to work to enhance school facilities. I'll turn it over now for Director Miller to talk a little bit more about what's in the plan.
Thank you, Cassie. Good evening, VCU SD Board and Community. My name is Lourdes Miller. I'm the Director of Data and Analysis. And next, we'll review the goals, metrics, and actions components of the LCAP. So LCAP goals define what we aim to achieve, actions explain how we plan to reach goals, and metrics identify how the progress of each goal is measured. There are four broad goals that align with our strategic pillars and are intended to drive continuous improvement for all school sites. Each goal has specific actions and metrics. Broad Goal One is aligned to VCU SD Strategic Plan Pillar Three, a vibrant culture of teaching and learning, and this goal has eighteen actions and is measured with seventeen metrics. Broad Goal Two is aligned to VCU SD Strategic Plan Pillar Two, Safe and Supportive Learning Environments, and this goal has eleven actions and twelve metrics. Broad Goal Three is aligned to VCU SD Strategic Plan Pillar One, Equitable Opportunities and Equitable Outcomes. This goal has fifteen actions and is measured with seven metrics. The final broad goal, Broad Goal Four, is aligned with VCU SD Strategic Plan Pillar Four, Community-Centered Education, and this goal has seven actions and six metrics. The following goals are Equity Multiplier Goals. These goals are specific to sites that have, have been identified as needing focus support. Equity Multiplier Focus Goal Eight is focused on supporting English learner students at Valeo High, and this goal has three actions and four metrics. Equity Multiplier Focus Goal Nine is focused on addressing suspension rates at Valeo High, and this goal has three actions and four metrics. Equity Multiplier Focus Goal Ten is focused on improving reading outcomes at Lincoln Elementary, and this goal has three actions and four metrics. Next Equity Multiplier Focus Goal Eleven is focused on improving academic outcomes for specific student groups at Annie Penny Cook Elementary. This goal has five actions and four metrics. Equity Multiplier Focus Goal Twelve is focused on improving academic outcomes for specific student groups and improving English learner progress at Highland Elementary, and this goal has five actions and is measured with four metrics. Finally, Equity Multiplier Focus Goal Thirteen is focused on improving the conditions and climate for all students at Highland Elementary, and this goal has one action and is measured and this goal has one action and is measured with two metrics. I'll turn it back to Ms. Cassie.
So with these goals comes allocation of funding based on the priorities identified through educational partner engagement. And so what you see on the screen is how that funding is allocated across the broad goals. So we have Goal One around vibrant culture of teaching and learning, highest funded at over twenty-three million, moving into Broad Goal Two around safe and supportive learning environments, Goal Three with around just, just below eight million to address equitable opportunities and equitable outcomes, and finally Broad Goal Four around community-centered education at just over two million. The total allocation for supplemental and concentration grant funds for next year is comprised of a current-year allocation plus carryover for a total of forty-five million, five hundred seven thousand and a hundred thirty-nine. Lordis had mentioned the LCFF Equity Multiplier Grants. Those funding sources are for the specific schools that were mentioned, and so we call those focus goals because those funds will be focusing on the needs of those schools. In total, VCUSD receives two million, six hundred forty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars to address the actions in Goals Five through Thirteen. Looking at some of the highlights for twenty-five, twenty-six, we have built-in continuous improvement structures throughout our system, including our LCAP plan, and so that means that every single action has metrics. We have lead metrics with each goal, but then also more formative metrics built into each action. Our focus in twenty-five, twenty-six is moving from implementing actions, since this is our first year of this LCAP cycle, to actually seeing whether or not these actions are working, looking for effectiveness moving into twenty-five, twenty-six. We continue with our TK through twelve literacy focus for our professional learning plan. It will be Year Three in twenty-five, twenty-six where we're focusing on sustaining our expertise. We also are working on and continuing to work on the implementation of essential standards so that teachers are really focusing on those high-leverage standards to make sure students have deep understanding of learning at their grade level. Leadership team development continues at every level, so we want to make sure that ongoing coaching and support is provided, not just at the district level, but also at the school sites. College and career readiness enhancements are also included in this LCAP plan with a focus on middle school, college and career counselors, and an additional focus on preparing for that transition between middle school and high school, knowing that the research shows that if we want to see students successfully graduating, that work begins much earlier than high school, and so we need to make sure we're channeling some of the funding to make sure our students are supported so when they get to high school, they are ready to go and they have all the opportunities available to them. And then expansion of core learning. So this comes out every year in our educational partner engagement that our students, our staff, our families want to see additional art programming. They like to see the athletics. They like to participate. They see that not just as a student engagement opportunity, but also as a family engagement opportunity and for us to continue working on communicating with our students to identify those high-interest programs. Furthermore, making sure we have resources in our classrooms to support student collaborative talk. We saw in our student engagement that students would like teachers to provide that direct instruction. They value the expertise of the teachers, but they also want multiple opportunities to learn and be able to demonstrate mastery. Other highlights include enhanced multi-tiered system of support actions, making sure that we have supports for students both academically as well as socially emotionally. We have a funding source called the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant that was added into the needs assessment for our LCAP plan. So we're including funds that we have and have had to continue providing evidence-based supports. This also means continuing with our mental health, wellness and trauma-informed care supports. We continue to work on additional resources for our multilingual learners, focusing on the wide range. So English learners have multiple needs when they're newcomers versus long-term English learners, which is a student group that we're monitoring closely, both on the dashboard and in all of our formative work, and our duly identified students, who are students who are multilingual learners as well as have IEPs. Attendance awareness, as you heard in the previous presentation, continues to be a focus, making sure we are doing everything on our end to encourage students to attend every day, but also providing resources through staffing to make sure we're reaching out to families to understand what some of the root causes may be for them not sending their children to school and having staff to help respond to those needs. And then, of course, expanding parent education opportunities and supports. Our parents want to connect with our schools. They want to connect with their students' classrooms, and so we need to continue to offer a variety, a wide range of opportunities for parents to become involved in their children's education. So these are the highlights, and this also concludes our presentation on the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six LCAP. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Dr. Young? I'm watching.
Very impressive. The highlights, very impressive. What I'm looking for, this is all, this is all what is, is a highlight of what you want to accomplish in twenty-five, twenty-six, correct? Okay, what I'm looking for in twenty-five, twenty-six is, um, what does all this look like? How is it implemented? Is it being assessed? If it's not, if it's being assessed, when the assessment comes through, how are you going to monitor and adjust it in order for it to be successful and sustainable? That's what I'm looking for.
So we might both respond to that a little bit, just in terms of.
This is fine. This is a start, and I'm impressed. But my most concern at this particular time is this is a lot, but it doesn't, I don't see. It's a lot.
It's a comprehensive plan for sure, and it does encompass a lot of activities, and within those highlights are a lot of sub-activities. So when you take a deeper dive into the LCAP plan, you'll see a lot of detail. And going back to the slide around the different components, excuse me for doing that, when I talked about how the LCAP tells a story, one of the portions of the LCAP is a section called Increased and Improved Services where we explain not just the needs, but what we're going to do to address those needs. And it explains with a little bit more detail. Of course, it doesn't lay out every single, single plan, but it does also describe how we're going to measure it, and not just once a year, but throughout the course of the school year. Because measuring each of these actions becomes critical as we move into Year Three, because if we don't see evidence of effectiveness in these actions, then the, the requirement is to revise or get rid of actions. And so monitoring them and making sure we follow up with you in the mid-year report about where this effectiveness is going is part of the work that, that needs to be done.
That's, 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 that's good. That's, that's what I was looking for. But the, the timeframe, do you let it go on a semester? Do you let it go on nine weeks? Do you let it go on before you assess it?
And I can start and then I'll let you finish. These metrics are something that are built in. Depending on the metric, we'll, we'll determine the timeframe. So we, we are working at a district level, too. When you talk about our district leadership team meetings, we are always looking at data, and all of that data, both that we're looking at as a district leadership team as well as what sites are looking at as site leadership teams through their own school plans, are data points that we are monitoring monthly. And then those conversations are happening at the school sites and at the departments consistently.
That's, that's, that's good to.
You have something to say?
Yes.
Oh, come on, honey.
Thank you so much. I, I think Director Gossett captured most of it. But with some of the metrics that we have in the plan, the outcomes for those metrics come out annually. So if there are metrics from the California School Dashboard or Data Quest, we got those annually. However, there are also local metrics that we use, and we're able to monitor those, you know, during our district leadership team meetings, and I also formally meet with each site to go over their metrics at least quarterly or every trimester.
See, with the problem with it coming out at the end of the year causes, causes a problem because then it's too late.
Right, right.
So seeing that you guys have that metrics in there as it goes, it shouldn't be a negative or it should be increasing in what we're looking for. That's good. I have another question. Watching you guys. I think it's slide number ten. That's, let's see the teacher. I've been to her classroom. She is superb. She's, oh. Great teacher, great teacher.
Is this ten?
Yeah, that's it. That's it. No, that, the one that says Highland, that's the one I'm interested in. Highland, there it is. That was twelve, eleven, whatever it is. Okay, I see a lot of, of Highland. Within three years, all students. Ten percent growth, huh?
Over three years, yes. That's something.
So that's growing a, a certain percentage each year?
Correct, correct. And just to be clear, these are also the metrics that are in their school plan. So we've aligned these so that we're, we're working from multiple angles to hit the same priorities.
Are you taking into account some of the kids aren't coming to you at the level that they need to be in order to get them where you need them to be?
So that's, that's definitely a consideration, and that's why if you look at the actions within Equity Multiplier Focus Goal Twelve, you will see more specific approaches that the school site is going to do in order to make sure that they're responding to the needs of, of the students.
What does that mean?
So it means, it means that currently Highland has higher suspensions and overall, but in particular with the student groups mentioned, that we need to focus on. And these funds are going to be targeted to make sure we put some supports in place to respond to, to student needs.
I don't see anything in there that deals with mental, mental, um, stress, mental, mental health. I don't see anything in there, and knowing that population, since that's my district, they need that.
So the action that's attached to Focus Goal Thirteen is actually to provide funds for a social worker. So they would have a dedicated social worker to really be there on campus to be proactive as well as responsive for those student needs.
They have people that are qualified in order to diagnose what those children need in order to refer them.
And I think that's something where we coordinate with all of our services to make sure we're providing high quality. Not, this is not an absence of our MTSS that we have in place for health and wellness. So we do have our mental health support providers still on campus, our academic support providers to coordinate activities. This is just another layer to make sure that Highland doesn't go out with, go without that immediate support.
Thank you. I feel bad.
Can you explain, or was the, when you first started, did you say eighty-four percent unduplicated for the whole district?
Eighty-five point five four.
Eighty-five point five, almost eighty-six percent.
Correct.
Can you, out of a hundred percent of student population, so that almost approximately eighty-six percent, can you explain to everyone what unduplicated means? What is that eighty-sixth number? I wanted to be clear what that means.
Sure. So when we're talking about our unduplicated student population, we're talking about students who are either low-income, English learner and/or foster youth. In some cases, students may qualify for more than one of those groups, right? But we only count them once. So what that percentage is saying, that if you had ten students, eight of them would be considered either low-income, English learner or foster youth.
Out of the eighty-six percent of the total
Correct.
number of the hundred percent population of our district.
Correct.
I just wanted that clarified for people to know or to hear.
Thank you for highlighting that.
Anything else, comments or questions? So the, with that, we are closing this hearing. Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Now we're on to item nine F, which is our public hearing for the LCAP for Valeo Charter School.
Opening the hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, President Fox, Superintendent Aurelio, Vice President Amboy, Trustees Young, Hodges, Morales and Community. My name is Jenny Slubin and I am the proud principal of Valeo Charter. I'm also celebrating a milestone tonight of ten years. I've been with the district for ten years since twenty-fourteen. I started off as a teacher at Jesse Bethel High School as a finance, accounting and entrepreneurship teacher, and I am so incredibly grateful for the opportunity to continue with the district as a principal. This is my second school and I'm very incredibly thankful. So thank you. But tonight, I'm here to, to present our Local Control and Accountability Plan for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Our plan follows the district's plan. Also, our LCAP is more than just a plan. It serves three key purposes, as so the district's. It ensures we engage with our educational partners, supports comprehensive planning for student success and maintains accountability and compliance with state requirements. Also, our LCAP tells a story. It tells a story of our school, how we listen to our community, identify what matters most and take action to meet the needs of our students and our families. We have talked to students, families, teachers, staff and community members through surveys, meetings and one-on-one to help shape our plan. From those conversations, here's what, what mattered to them the most. what mattered to them the most. Our community wanted great teachers and support staff, academic help for our students, mental health and safety, equity and inclusion for all, stronger family engagement and enrichment in after-school programs. This, this information helped to shape our goals, our metrics, and actions. We're committed to clearly communicating what we plan to do, how we will measure success, and the steps we will take to get there. Our LCAP goals align with the district's strategic priorities and guide continuous improvement across all areas of our school teaching and learning, school culture, and community engagement. In our goal one, broadband goal one, there are seven actions and seven metrics. In broadband goal two, there are four actions and nine metrics. We want every student to read and be at grade level by third grade and develop the skills outlined in the VCU SD Portrait of a Graduate. This means investing in strong instruction, academic growth, and equity. We're also focusing on family and community engagement. By increasing opportunities for families to be involved, we strengthen our school and student outcomes. Leadership opportunities and feedback groups are key, key strategies. And actually, this should be broadband goal three. We have four actions and seven metrics. And in goal four, there are two actions and six metrics. As you can see, this is the slide that shows how we have allocated our funds to support our goals. The largest investment that we show here are in teaching and learning, which is goal one, and followed by school culture, community engagement, student leadership, and opportunities. Our total budget is 1.8 million. Here are some key highlights from our LCAP. We are providing more instructional support, especially in literacy. Small group instruction and classroom libraries are being expanded. We have also added collaboration time and expen- and enhanced SEO programs like PACs for younger grades. We are continuing our EO, or Expeditionary Learning Model, and expanding training for staff. Classrooms will get updated materials and technology to support early literacy. We're also strengthening support for multilingual learners. In closing, Vallejo Charter's LCAP is a reflection of our shared vision for our students. It's grounded in equity, excellence, and the belief that every student deserves to thrive. Thank you for your continued support and partnership.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public or from the board? With that, this hearing is closed. We are now down to agenda item 9G.
Good evening again. For information, item 9G, I'm providing, on the, I'm providing information on the 24-25 end-of-year financial projections for Vallejo City Unified School District. This report reflects all district fund activity as of April 30th, 2025, and projects revenues, expenditures, and fund balances through June 30th. This third-level projection is a requirement for districts that filed a qualified or negative second interim report, in which we filed a qualified report, as we did earlier. State law requires us to submit this projection to the county superintendent, the controller, state superintendent of public instruction by June 1st, which we have done. This submission ensures transparency and allows state and county agents to monitor the district's fiscal health in real time. As of this report, all district funds are projected to close the year with positive ending fund balances. This includes the general fund as well as other major operating and capital funds. This report also includes projected cash balances and we can expect to maintain sufficient cash flow through the end of this fiscal year, avoiding the need for external borrowing or deferrals. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
We're now down to agenda item 10A.
Good evening, everyone. I have this item. We bring back for a second read and adoption of Board Policy and Administrative Regulations and Board Bylaw Updates. Just a little background, we receive periodically from the California School Boards Association updates to board policies based on changes in laws. And so what you have in front of you are the March 2025 and the December 2024 board policy updates. And we asked the board to adopt and approve.
Do I hear a motion for agenda item 10A? Vice President Amboy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 10A.
Uh, Trustee Hodges?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
And Trustee Simmons is absent. The motion passes.
Thank you. We've had a request from the board for, if we can take a brief two-minute recess and then we'll come back for item 10B. Think we're ready to reconvene? Okay. We're on agenda item 10B. Fernando's, I think, 10B?
All right. Hello again. Good evening. Tonight we're-
We don't have to do roll call, do we? No, I think so. We're all here. Okay, good.
10B, action item. Tonight, we're requesting approval of Resolution 5066. Am I on the right, did I do that? Yeah. Which formally appoints members to the Closure and Facility Advisory Committee, commonly referred to as the 7-Eleven Committee, and designate specific district properties for the committee to review. This action is a part of our ongoing efforts to assess current and future facility needs, including the potential Phase II school consolidation. The committee will consider various factors such as enrollment trends, facility modernization costs, and surplus property designations, while ensuring community input is central to the process. This is in compliance with ED Code 17388 and 173389. 7-Eleven Committee will consist of seven to eleven members representing a diverse community of interests. Their charge will be to develop recommendations on possible school closures and repurposing of real property, and come back and submit a formal report to the board. This type staffer recommends the board approve the formation of this committee and assignment of properties for review as outlined in the resolution.
I could just add, so there are 10 members selected on this committee. They're listed on the screen now. This was, this was a, a great pool of candidates we received. I want to say 21 folks who did apply to be on the committee. And one of the factors we have to always look at is having the right combination of membership, because 7-Eleven committees have very specific requirements. So this is a really broad base of our district and really covers, I think, every element was checked.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve action item 10B? Vice President Amboy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve action item 10B.
I don't know whose light was next. Trustee Hodges?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges?
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
And Trustee Simmons is absent. The motion passes.
Thank you. We're now on agenda item 10C. Prove, approval of our SALPA governance.
And this evening, we have Executive Director Kristen Hardy. Thank you for hanging in there all night.
Good evening, of course. Thank you for having me, President Fox, Vice President Amboy, Trustee Dr. Young, Trustee Hodges, Student Trustee Morales, and Superintendent Aurelio. So tonight, I bring our local plan as a single district SALPA. We have an annual plan that describes the services and budgets that the Special Education Department utilizes to serve our students. And I will walk through sort of a brief summary of, of our current structures and some of this information you've heard through the budget review this evening as well. So I'll do a quick overview of what the local plan is and what it covers and the different components of it. And then we'll take a look at the services and budget plan for the 25-26 school year. So as I mentioned, the state of California requires all SALPs to submit a plan to utilize the budget to provide services and ensure that every student with an IEP is appropriately served. So the process for approval is that the plan is brought to a stakeholder group that includes our community advisory council, our faculty and staff, other members of the public, our parents, in order to get feedback on the plan. Then we bring it to you to approve, and then it goes to the county superintendent, and then we finally submit it to the state of California. And so tonight, as part of the public hearing, to seek any public input and then also to gain your approval and the next step. So the local plan comprises many components, not all of which are required to be renewed every year. So we're on sort of the shortest cycle for the current year. And it's very much based on the full plan which came before the board in the 23-24 school year. So this year, we submit Sections A, which is the certifications and assurances, Section D, which, as I mentioned, is a budget plan, and then Section E, which is our services plan. And as you can see, Section B was, is the really large comprehensive portion of the plan, and that will come back around to the board on a three-year recurring cycle. So Section A is simply just who's involved in the plan and then the assurances that we will comply with what we say we're gonna do. For the budget plan requirement, it talks about the state and federal sources of income that we were discussing earlier. And we'll give a little more detailed information about where those sources are coming from, and then talks about the, the overall budget, and then where those sources are coming from and how we're gonna use those. And then E goes through the services that the district provides and where and how. So for the budget, as we discussed, and oh my goodness, this slide is now really small for my glasses.
It's fine.
But these, but these are the, and this reflects the state and the federal input for special education. And as you mentioned, President Fox, it is a fraction of what the costs of delivering these services are. And the federal government has never, the commitment for IDEA was to fund at 45%. They've never exceeded 14%. And I believe the current year they're at about 13%. But to your earlier question, currently, there is a commitment to provide, to, to fund IDEA to the extent that Congress has approved, but that that funding will continue into the 25-26 school year. So those revenue sources, those dedicated special education revenue sources are a little over $14 million. As a single district SALPA, we also do capture some specialized funding, and the district provides services to infants, which is, I think, something that the district should be really proud of. This slide reflects how we utilize that budget. You will notice that, and I think to, to Associate Superintendent Fernandez's point around how we're utilizing the district's budget in special education, we are very reliant currently on contracted services. So that does reflect that object code 5,000, thank you, at a little over $30 million. And you can see that in special education, the balance between the, the certificated and classified services, which are kind of the largest in the overall district budget, are smaller in special education because of the specificity of the services provided within special education and just the difficulty in recruiting staff with those specialized credentials, particularly post-COVID. But this is something that we are working on. This reflects really last year's budget and moving into this year, and is something that we are currently working on to increase our own staffing. So overall, this, this slide just reflects the overall revenue projections. And so you can see that the local contribution is similar to what Associate Superintendent Fernandez shared in his presentation. to what Associate Superintendent Fernandez shared in his presentation. And again, is a little bit fluid as we're really trying to, you know, right-size.
But we only get fourteen percent of, I mean, local contribution, okay?
Yeah, the local contribution, right. So you can see the state contribution is about twenty, little, twenty-one and a half percent, about ten million dollars. The projected federal revenue sources are about three point five million dollars.
We have to, okay.
And then the remaining, the remaining balance is, comes from the local contribution. And again, this is kind of reflective of last year's budget. But with that money, we provide a huge number of services to our community. And one of the things that Vallejo City should be so proud of is the fact that we serve about ninety-eight percent of our students in district. That is a rare thing. We really provide a very wide range of services, including being the regional program for deaf, hard of hearing students from preschool through the elementary grades. And then we partner with Fairfield that provides services for the rest of the county. So it is no small accomplishment or commitment on the part of the district to provide these specialized regional programs. And so we provide, this district delivers almost every possible service in a student's IEP in ways that are strategic and focused based on student needs. And so again, something to be really proud of. And you'll notice in the third column, we have the transition support services, and those are for our students that are over the age of sixteen and to really support the development of that graduate profile and supporting our students with IEPs to have plans for their life beyond VCUSD. And we provide those services through a range of programs. We, as I mentioned, provide the Exceptional Tots Program, which serves infants and their parents that are identified with special needs. We have preschool programs, a range of preschool programs. We have, and then a range of services and supports to meet the needs of students within the least restrictive setting. So everything from a student who may just get thirty to fifty minutes a day of special education support, all the way up to our students who require most of their day within a more specialized setting. We have classroom programs for students that focus, with autism, with emotional needs. Our Deaf, Hard of Hearing Program, as I was mentioning, we have programs for our adult transition, our students that are up to age twenty-two. And then we do have a small number of students who require more specialized placements and programs outside of our district. We utilize the California Department of Education specialized programs for deaf, hard of hearing and the blind, and then a very few students in non-public schools. And we do serve some of our students in home and hospital. So again, there's a program for every student, and that'll be determined by the IEP team. I'm very excited that for the 25-26 school year, we're going to be making some really impactful shifts on both ends of the continuum of our student services. One will be an inclusive preschool program. So as the state preschool gains a home at Loma Vista this coming year, we will be developing an inclusive preschool program, which we know that when we can get students started early, get them services, and hopefully support them that need less as they go into school, their long-term trajectory is, you know, really dramatically shifted. The other, I'll go into a little more detail, is called the Alternative Pathway to the Diploma, and this one is incredibly exciting. So California is actually one of the last of the fifty states to adopt the idea that every single student deserves access to a high school diploma. We know all the research suggests that lifetime outcomes were dramatically shifted for students who earn a diploma. So the Alternative Pathway was opened up to states through federal legislation a number of years ago. And with that came the ability for every state to define what that looked like locally for them. And as I mentioned, California was one of the later states to adopt it. It went into effect in the 22-23 school year. So next year's graduating seniors will have access to this, and we are ensuring that our seniors will have access to this. So here's the California law. So who is this for? This is, the Alternative Pathway is designed for students with significant cognitive disabilities. It is considered equivalent to the traditional high school diploma. It is for students who take the California Alternative Assessment. So it's one of the ways that the IEP team will kind of determine who is appropriate for this. It, students will receive curricular access to what are called the California, the Alternative Achievement Standards, which are aligned to the California Alternative Assessment. It requires students to meet statewide minimum coursework requirements. And it allows our students with extensive support needs to remain and continue with their IEP services through the age of twenty-two, which is really important. And it is an IEP team decision. So next year, our students in our extensive support needs special day classes will have access to the minimum course requirements. Will be using the Unique Learning Systems, which is one of two state-adopted curriculum aligned to the California Alternative Assessments. And this is aligned to the California minimum requirement. So we have two hundred and twenty for most of our diploma track students, and that's our local diploma requirements. The students who are taking the Alternative Assessment have one hundred and thirty credits required. So they'll take three years of English, two years of math, including one year, at least one year, aligned with the essential standards of algebra, two years of science, one biological, one physical, or two years of integrated science, one year of history, one year of world history, one year of government and economics, two years of physical education, and one year of visual and performing art. So they get the entire exposure to all of the core knowledge and information that all of our graduating students have, which is so important. And if they continue to take a full course load, that's two hundred and forty credits, they have a lot of space to choose courses that are important and valuable to them and their families. So we're really excited to be offering this. And actually, both high schools were already very closely aligned to this already, so we'll just be making some tweaks to ensure that our seniors are on track. In order to support all of these shift and changes, we have done some strategic realignment within the central office to include two teacher leaders. We'll have one to be supporting our teachers with mild, moderate credentials and serving our students with mild to moderate support needs, and then one to support our students with extensive support needs. We've also created an Early Intervention Support Coordinator. That was a reassignment of another position that's supporting with the significant disproportionality work. And then we are recruiting for an Assistant Director. And that, again, is a sort of a restructuring of some other positions based on the specificity of the work. And so with that, I will take any questions. And I do understand that I'll have an opportunity as we continue to dig in and look at all of the structures and things to come, to probably do a deeper board study session with you and be able to answer more questions. But if you have any questions now.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing for any comments or questions.
And we do have one card before we go into questions from the board. Get the public comment? We're going to come back to questions. We just want to, Councilmember, Councilwoman Gordon, I believe you submitted a card for this item.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Good evening. It's great to stand before you. I want to appreciate every last one, the President, the Vice President, Dr. Young, and then Dean Hodges. And I want to say thank you so much for allowing me to be here. I want to say I am so excited of your report. I don't often get to say that. And I also appreciate your excitement to want to see our children succeed. My son Christopher Gordon graduated here twenty twenty seventeen. Of course, all of my children actually graduated from the school district. Longtime parent advocate. I stand before you because we have some concerns regarding the SALPA parents not being felt like they're being heard. And I hope that you can help me navigate that. And I'll be willing to partner with you in that area. But I also am excited to see the college because Christopher is probably the one who probably started that. At the, he went to, he was, he had his two hundred and forty credits to get his diploma, but he never received it. So then I, because you remember the state took away that requirement, so they made him qualify. So then I put him in adult education as if he never spoke English so that he can get whatever he might have missed. He was there for four years. He still didn't get his diploma. So to this day, he does not have his diploma, and he desires it because I have one for all of his other siblings and not him. So at twenty-five, he still desires that. But I'm happy to see that it is moving forward because there are students that have went through that program with adult education, and they are excited about it. So I hope that it's still going on. I'm not sure because I haven't been up to date with that, you know, running your election. It keeps you busy. But I'm willing to see more successful individuals because outside of our district, believe it or not, individuals are not only getting their diplomas with Down syndrome and autism, but they're also able to go on to universities. It's exciting. And then when I say, oh, my son's doing this, but yet he don't have his diploma, they're like, what? My, I got mine, what do you mean? So it's, I don't know if this is something within our district that we need to conquer, but I really do want people to understand our children may have challenges, but we've put a lot of money into this budget to make sure that they are successful. They first are general ed first, right? Then all these extra funds come on top of that to make sure they are successful. So, but I just want to tell you, I'm excited about your report. Thank you very much, okay? That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Are there any other comments about the report for the hearing? I would like to say it's just exciting that the pathway for all students to be successful, that is something that's so heartening. And starting early on, I liked how you said from pre-K to K, starting with that and building throughout, and then making sure that the number of units, credits, so forth, are adjusted or accommodated throughout the path to get to the final goal. So I'm just, and it's something that I'm proud that Vallejo City Unified School District is doing. And when you showed all the accommodations for, that we provide to our special ed students, that also is just so gratifying because as we know charter schools do not have to do any of that or even accept anyone with special education. We take everyone. We don't throw or cherry pick kids back because they're different. We take everyone and serve them to the best we can. So anyways, I just was so happy to hear where we're going and proud of where we're going. Dr. Young?
Back to me. Career pathways. How is that encompassed into the diploma?
So our students with IEPs are general education students first. So every opportunity that any student at the high school would have, our students with IEPs have as well, right? They may require some accommodations or supports in order to access some of those programs, but that is, you know, what we provide. In addition to that, students with IEPs have the individual transition plan, which would really be wonderful for every single high school student to have. So starting now in eighth grade, starting next year, there'll be intentional planning to help students begin to think about, what are my skills? What are my interests? What are the activities I can be building to gain exposure to that? And we actually have six career transition specialists who work with our high school students to help. We have a robust transition partnership and workability program. Both are federal programs, hopefully that will remain because there's quite a lot of funding with that. And that supports our students with learning differences to be able to access internships and a variety of pre-vocational as well as pre-educational opportunities. So many more college programs opening up for students with learning differences. So all are part of the planning and program and supports that are in place for our students.
The reason why I said that because I had a wonderful opportunity to be a coach for, at Bethel. Mr. Miller. Excellent teacher. And I watched the process of those kids in that particular classroom learn to stock, learn to, they went to Walgreens. Walgreens did a partnership with them, and every day, they helped them stock the store. There was a couple of them at a level that they were at the cash register with assistants. It was really remarkable. It was really remarkable. I was very impressed. That's why I asked the career pathway route also.
And those community partnerships are so incredibly valuable and always something we want to be growing.
I think the last thing is that there's such a huge challenge with special ed finding. These days, just trying to find person, teachers and assistants, there's such a shortage throughout the state just to find applicants. So hopefully, we'll be able, and we would prefer to have our own, instead of from recruiters or such or temporaries. But that's a huge challenge going forward is just trying to staff. So us, like everyone else in the state, will just continue to try or do our best to find the qualified or the applicants. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll be closing this hearing.
And then we need a motion.
Need a motion. Vice President Amboy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Action Item 10C.
Second, Dr. Young?
Aye, second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges?
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young? Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons is absent. The motion passes.
Action Item D, Dr. Patrick. Adoption of Resolution 5051, non-re elect.
Yes, thank you, President Fox. I am, these, I have three action items that I'm bringing before you. And the first is the adoption of Resolution 5051 for non-relection of a non-credential certificated employee. And this connects to the pillar three, vibrant culture of teaching and learning.
Vice President Amboy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Action Item 10D.
Trustee Hodges?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges?
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
And Trustee Simmons is absent. The motion passes.
Now we're on to Action Item 10E, Memorandum of Understanding Between the Vallejo Education Association. Dr. Patrick, this is you as well.
Yes. I'm asking for the board to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Vallejo Education Association, CTA, VEA, and the Vallejo City Unified School District for the one-time off-the-salary-schedule stipend, again, connecting to the vibrant culture of teaching and learning.
Vice President Amboy?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Action Item 10E.
Trustee Hodges?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges?
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young?
Aye.
Vice President Amboy?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Trustee Morales?
Aye.
Trustee Simmons is absent. The motion passed. Thank you.
One more, Dr. Patrick. Action Item 10F.
Yes. So this is the memorandum of understanding between the Vallejo City Unified School District and the Vallejo School Managers Association regarding the Me Too Adjustment, the calendar alignment, the confidential salary and benefits adjustment for our VSMA members.
Vice President Amboy? Vice President Amboy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Action Item Ten-F.
Trustee Hodges.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores is absent. Trustee Young.
Aye.
Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Morales.
Aye.
Trustee Simmons is absent. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Patrick.
We're down to Action Agenda Item Eleven, Report Superintendent Orellillo.
Good evening, President Fox, trustees, and members of the VCUSD community. As we close out the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I want to begin tonight by just extending my heartfelt congratulations to all our retirees and our dedicated employees who are celebrating their service milestones from five to thirty-five years. And as we saw on the retiree list, I saw someone had forty-six years, if I was, believe, that's retiring, so, which is amazing. Your commitment and contributions to our students, families, and schools have left an enduring impact on this district, and we are grateful. This is also our final board meeting before many of our employees begin a well-deserved summer break. I want to take this moment to wish every one of our staff members a restful and restorative summer. Your efforts this year have been nothing short of extraordinary, and I look forward to welcoming you back in August, refreshed and ready to continue our shared mission of educational excellence. To our class of twenty-twenty-five, your graduation ceremonies next week mark a significant milestone. We are proud of all, all you've accomplished and the resilience you've shown in navigating your educational journey. You represent the hope, energy, and potential of this community, and I can't wait to celebrate with you and your families. As we step into the next fiscal year, we are reminded of the challenges ahead. Our adopted budget and LCAP reflect the realities of declining enrollment, tightening revenues, and increasing costs. The decision we face, the decisions we will face are not easy, but they are necessary, so we must continue to examine every program, every practice, and every expenditure through a critical and student-centered lens. We will need to make difficult but thoughtful choices to ensure fiscal stability, academic rigor, and equitable student support across the system. If we remain focused and collaborative, we will emerge stronger, better-aligned, and more capable of serving the you, the young people of Vallejo. Finally, I encourage everyone to come out and support our Filipino community this weekend at the Pista Sanion Celebration on Saturday, right? Not too far from here, at the coal sheds here on Mare Island. It's a day-long celebration. It's an annual event that showcases the vibrant community, the culture, the heritage, and the community spirit. I believe I will be attending, and I believe Trustee Amboy is going to be in some parade. I don't know if you're in a float or what, but you're on, you're in the parade. So, thank you for the continued support, as always, dedication, and the belief in the work ahead. That is my report.
No, can you talk about what happened last Wednesday evening?
That's so long ago.
No, it wasn't.
So, last Wednesday evening, you know, I, I work in one-week chunks, that's why. Last Wednesday evening, we hosted at Vallejo Charter School, thanks to the fantastic team, everything from the technology team led by Winston Crump to the Superintendent's Team. We, we were able to put together an event that was targeted specifically for our Spanish-speaking community, United Voices. And I know, President Fox, you were there, as well as Trustee Flores. I know you had the experience of wearing headsets to hear interpretation, which I think hopefully sheds some light on the experiences our families tend to have when we have meetings in English with interpretation into Spanish. But it was a fantastic event. It was nice to see the families that came out, and our students as well, who were there to celebrate and perform.
Yes, and I want to talk about, we are Vallejo, and I want to talk about teamwork. Ms. Thomas was dishing out food, Ms. Heather Tapasio was dishing out food, Rochelle was running around checking on this, that, and the other thing. Selena was making sure that communication was going properly and that you were using the right microphone and every other thing. Then we had other, we had Winston and Mike behind the scene with all the, all the other staff. I don't know all their names, I'm sorry, but appreciate all of you. We're all making sure that all the microphones, the sound check, the speakers, the level of teamwork to pull that off and to show, and the room was crowded. The room, every table was packed with parents and families. I was just so proud of this district, of how everyone came together as a team and made sure it was possible for, to get messages across and communications across, to make sure everyone feels inclusive and that they know in times of fear what their rights are, what accessibility, or that we are there for them. So, it's just another proud moment of who we are as Vallejo City Unified School District, and seeing every one of you step up, really step up, and just show that your commitment and love to the students and families of this district, that is who we are. And that just made me walk away so proud. And I want to thank you and all the staff for what you did last Wednesday, and I can't wait for more community events like that, showing off who we are. We are Vallejo. Now, your report, I think, is concluded. And with that, we will start. Trustee Hodges, would you like to start?
Because I'm new here, unfortunately, tonight, I don't have anything to report except for a personal item.
Well, Trustee Hodges, actually, you do have plenty to report. I could remind you, we went to an event together over the weekend where we were in a neighborhood association.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that was so long ago.
See? That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I, I attended a, a neighborhood meeting for Vallejo Heights with Superintendent Orellillo, and he was, gave a lot of information about what's going on here with the school district, with the folks that live in that neighborhood, which is in my area. So, that's one of the reasons why I attended, getting to know the people in the neighborhood. So, yeah, with that, that'll conclude my report.
No, you got to share your personal thing.
Oh, yeah. I, I had actually two graduation ceremonies from St. Mary's College of California. I got a master's degree in marriage and family therapy, professional counseling, and higher education administration. Proud of the African-American ceremony. They allowed me to be the keynote speaker.
Congratulations. Thank you. Dr. Young.
Thank you for sharing that, because that was, that is an accomplishment in this day and age. I got the opportunity to go through the end-of-the-year induction program celebration on March twenty-ninth, and that was a joy, because that was the ending, you got to see delightful candidates that had finished the first year and the second year of their teacher requirements. So, you know, it's not like it used to be, you just take a test and then you're stuck in the classroom. That, those days is over with, okay? So, it was good to see that that, and an introduction to that program, which I'm aware of, but it was good to be refreshed in that. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Vice President Amboy.
I have nothing to report tonight.
And for my report, I already spoke about being at Vallejo Charter School, but a very humbling opportunity, as you mentioned, was since the whole program was in Spanish, and I, yo hablo español muy poquito, I, wearing the headphones or having the translation, that was an excellent, excellent experience, because usually when it's the other way around, it's good to always put yourself to be vulnerable and uncomfortable so that you can learn and that your mindset can see just how others have, are presented information, or do not or do get information. So, it was a wonderful experience. I was a little concerned, because I was like, oh, I'm not going to under, but it was fine, just listening to the headphones. But I'm also so proud of the presentations, the Sarah Latino, the program that brought dancers and performers. But then we also had our own TK, the kids. Oh, they were singing De los Colores, and I'm probably not saying that right. Colores, thank you. And other songs, and it was just, oh, when you see the kids and they're singing and they're performing, it's just, it brings out the parents and the families, but it was just a wonderful, wonderful evening to be proud of our students and our families. And we think that's it for, looking forward to the graduations next week, can't wait. That's the most exciting time for me, is actually, to be, again, that pride and proud that we have of our, of our families and our students. With that, and you already gave your report, all right, so now we are down to community forum, if needed.
Have any?
Close session, not needed. Announcements of upcoming meetings.
Not seen them listed there.
We have the eighteenth.
We do have our next regular board meeting on the eighteenth. We're, the scheduled two-by-two is different for June. It is upcoming on Monday.
Monday, the sixteenth, at five o'clock.
The sixteenth, at five o'clock. So, that is a change, but then our regular, next regular board meeting will be on the eighteenth, and of course graduations next week on the twelfth and thirteenth.
Any other announcements of upcoming things, Ms. Thomas? Did we get them all? Or Rochelle, did we get them all? Okay, thank you. Future board agenda items. Anything else for the good of the order? Thanks for hanging in there, everyone, it was a long meeting. Happy June. All right. Good night. This meeting is adjourned at nine forty-six.